The February 6, 2025, Des Moines City Council's study session is now called to order. Councilmember Oxiger will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let the record show that six council members are present physically, and we do have a council member that is going to be joining us by phone. Did we, do we have a phone number?
Yes.
Sorry for the delay. I forgot to plan that ahead.
Okay.
Karen.
Hi, Councilmember Nutting. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, good. And so you'll be responsible for muting yourself?
Yep.
All right. Thanks. And I will work on calling on you periodically whenever we finish a conversation. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so to all of the public joining us tonight, wow, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for attending. Thank you for your interest. For those watching online or Channel 21, please know that we cannot attend to our phones while we're sitting up here in the dais. So if you do, however, if you do experience technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. That's cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by the council?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. So right now is going to be time for public comment because this is a study session. We'll only be hearing comments tonight regarding the items on the agenda. Other subjects may be heard at our regular business meetings. Tonight, though, we are going to be switching it up a little bit. We're going to have two separate public comment segments. The reason for that is, well, first, out of deference to a few of our invited speakers, I have specifically invited some organizations to come and talk to us tonight in regard to the Airport Committee conversation, which will be later in the evening. But I want to open the beginning of the meeting for them first, and then the Planning Commission also. So those two subjects will come first in this segment. And then, for those offering comment regarding the steps and the peer, we're going to hold those until we have an opportunity to hear the presentation first. And then I'm going to offer a separate public comment segment just for that subject. So we'll have public comment, presentation, then we'll hear another segment of public comments after the presentation. So as a note, I have personally contacted three speakers who were not able to offer comment on the peer in the previous meeting, and I've offered them the first three spots for the peer comment segment. So even if they're not here yet, I will call their names before anybody else comments to give them preferential opportunity. So moving on, for this segment, I've invited, I think I already said that, three to four presenters from organizations. Those organizations will get five minutes each. Individual members of the public will have three minutes to speak. Please remember to keep your comments respectful and recognize that any person speaking or acting in a way that's disruptive to the meeting will be removed. When you do approach the podium, please state your name and organization or city of residence. So beginning with the organizations that will be talking to us tonight about the Airport Committee, the reason for this is I personally asked them to come and give us some, offer advice from their experience because we'll be having this discussion later in the meeting. So first up is Maria Batiola. She's from an organization called No Added Harm. She works out of Beacon Hill with an organization up there. Hi, Maria.
It's on. Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to clarify that the organization, our website is noaddedharm.org, but our organization is called the CTEC Airport Community Coalition for Justice. In short, STACK for J. My name is Maria Batiola. I chair the steering committee, and there are five organizations: Beacon Hill Council, Alcanto de la Raza, King County International Airport Community Coalition, Quiet Skies Puget Sound, and 350 Seattle Aviation Team. I'm going to set a larger context for this conversation, and that's really so you have a sense of what we are working on. We are communities, what is called, under the flight paths. We are not next to the airport. We're not eligible for noise mitigation. We're not eligible for any air pollution mitigation. And by the way, there is no air pollution mitigation. And there's only limited noise pollution mitigation. And so the big picture really is, when we're talking about aviation-impacted communities, this is not full. There's more flight paths here. We have to really take a look at what's called the freeway in the sky and really say, there's a whole bunch of us that are impacted. And so we started doing this work to advocate and give voices for people of color, immigrants, and refugees. So locally, from Beacon Hill Council, we have 40,000-plus residents, 70% people of color, 40% immigrants and refugees. And so with that kind of a mind frame, we look at this as a justice issue. And when we look at the bigger picture of these flight paths and communities near the airport, we realize that less than half a million people are impacted. That includes you. We use the census data to add the cities around and those underneath. And we know it's not perfect, but it's what we know. And underneath, within that, it's 64% people of color and 29% immigrants and refugees. So it's really important for us to reach out to the seven cities and say, where are the voices of people of color? Because we learned from COVID and from environmental justice that communities that are more vulnerable, we learned it from COVID, they're faster and harder impacted. Vulnerable populations are elders, youth, pregnant women, and those with impaired health systems. And so I wanted to make sure that we're looking at that, and we need to realize that the solution isn't just with FAA money. And that's an important thing. So our soundbite is really simple. It's healthy aviation communities and healthy workers. We cannot separate the two. They are us and we are them. It's also really important to know that our story is really simple. We're not into the technical pieces of SAMP. We're into making our story of health, environment, and climate the real story. It's called lived experience. Somehow, your voices, our voices, gets lost because it becomes about here, the different technical parts of SAMP. What do you know about it? What don't you know about it? If you debated on that, your reality will never come to fore. So that's why we keep our story really simple. We know it's seven levels of government, and we really need to realize that in this environment, we need to turn our eyes not just on the federal, but really on the state and King County. King County has jurisdiction over health. And now, we worked hard with Councilmember Grandma Zali putting in the amendments for us to change the Strategic Climate Action Plan of King County to include, for the very first time, aircraft emission. It used to be measured at 3%. It's now 15% of transportation. And I believe that since there's a King County Strategic Climate Action Plan, that is also one recourse on reducing aviation greenhouse gases. In other words, that's carbon. That's the same thing that affects our respiratory system. And of course, air noise pollution has cardio. It has sleep interruption. It impacts asthma. It impacts our kids' learning. Thank you so much.
Are you good to wrap up? I mean, I'd give you a couple more sentences if you need to wrap up.
I have recommendations for your team.
Okay, if you could send those to us, or do you have?
I have copies for you.
Pass them to the city clerk.
And if I may just summarize within those one minute, it's really important that you have three, if you're looking at five to nine seats, three to five for community, one to two for health, and one to two for climate because you can always get technical assistance to come in. As a matter of fact, you're sitting next to one of the most knowledgeable people around this topic. And also, it's really important that it's health, environment, climate, and trees. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Maria. Appreciate that. Next up is Karen Valoria, representing the Burian Airport Committee.
Hi, my name is Karen Valoria, and I live in the Boulevard Park area of Burian, which is right under the flight path. I've lived there for the last 20 years, and I've been on the, I was recruited to be on the Airport Committee a couple of years ago, so I'm a new member. But even since then, since I've started, there's been a turnover of candidates of people in our Airport Committee. What the Airport Committee does is we advise the City Council, we're an advisory committee to the City Council. We report to the City Council right now ad hoc. It's not a regular term, but whenever we need something, we'll go there. When I first started on the council, we had seven members. But since then, we've changed. There's been a turnover. And we had three council members on the committee. We found out that three council members on the committee is too much because during election season, we couldn't come to a quorum. We didn't have any meetings because everybody was busy doing their reelection things, and we fell on the wayside. So there were months where we weren't able to reach a quorum. So my recommendation is, right now, so because of that, and because we wanted to move forward and we knew the SAMP was coming, we asked the council if we could amend our rules to go down to five members. And we did that last year, and so the last, 2004, we had five members. We were able to reach a quorum all the time. We were able to at least organize a little bit. We were able to reach out to community organizations. And so with that one council member, we did, the council member doesn't necessarily have to be the chair, we found out, because there's so many people, so many residents who are so pumped up about this subject that they have more, they have more information and are more in tune than, say, a council person. So we have a chairperson, and then we just went back to the council last month to ask, now that we have, we had five members last year, now that we're moving and we're getting things done, we are asking again to raise our, the members up to seven. So we're going to recruit a couple more members to come in because that way, then we could, the three of us could go out for coffee and not, you know, not go against the rules of a public, public, public meetings. So forward, we are going to have seven members. We are taking, for any Burian residents, I don't know if any, we are taking applications for the Airport Committee right now. We meet once a month, every third Tuesday of the month. I think, and this is just my opinion, but I think sometimes during the legislative session or during the fall as we get ready for that, sometimes it's nicer to, it might be more beneficial to meet twice a month because there's so much going on. The one thing that we did not do, because we were only, we were all new members and there was only five of us, we didn't really interact with the city manager and the city attorney as we should have. So the Airport Committee wasn't able to get anything about the airport on the legislative agenda. So that's something, we didn't, we weren't working with the council that way. So that's just a learning opportunity for us. We're still in the growing stages of our committee. And I think with all the energy that's been in the last couple of months with the community groups, there's so many community groups out there organizing, I think it's a really exciting time. And does anybody have any questions? Okay.
This is just your, your time.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay. So that's what I have to say.
But we know where to reach you.
Okay.
Also, after this, and if you have anything that you want to pass on to us, go ahead and hand it to the clerk, and feel free to write to us.
Okay, okay. But I think I would do everything I wanted to say. Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So next up, we have, in absentee, sent a video or a set of slides with a, with a voiceover from Steve Edmiston, representing Quiet Skies Puget Sound.
Hi, this is Des Moines resident Steve Edmiston. Quiet Skies Puget Sound is a 100% volunteer association advocating for the health and environment of communities impacted by CTEC Airport operations. Founded by Sheila Brush in 2016, anyone can learn more and join nearly 1,500 other Quiet Skies Puget Sound followers on Facebook. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on our proposed new aviation committee. For Quiet Skies, I want to cover some context on what's bad and what's good for Des Moines, given the status of the Port of Seattle Sustainable Airport Master Plan, pose some threshold questions, and make some recommendations. So for some context, here's what's bad. Per the Port of Seattle Strategic Airport Master Plan Environmental Assessment, there will be 87,000 more annual flights carrying catastrophic public health consequences to children, the elderly, and our social and environmental justice communities. As the EA makes clear, there has been no meaningful port compromise, collaboration, or mitigation relating to addressing these public health and environmental concerns arising from the expansion. To this end, the EA also evidences that both the START Roundtable and Highline Forum have been a way to check boxes as far as airport expansion is concerned. Finally, to observers, it's not clear that this council is on the same page as to the existential nature of airport expansion in relation to our public health and the environment, and where opposition to such expansion should be prioritized by the city. So what's good? Well, opposition to the SAMP is lining up, from the United States Environmental Protection Agency to other airport neighbor cities and their committees, and to a growing number of advocacy groups. Our federal representative, Adam Smith, is a strong advocate for airport neighbor communities. At the state level, our own state senators and representatives have been historically terrific, and thanks again to Senators Kaiser and Orwell. Also, the legal and regulatory framework is becoming more positive for communities to push back. In the courts, the FAA's reliance on outdated science and regulation is being called into question. And there is, of course, a class action suit pending its going forward versus the Port of Seattle, Delta, and Alaska Airlines for the aviation harms being caused to our CTEC Airport communities. We pose these questions for the council to think about. We believe the answers are important from the perspective of someone considering service on the committee. They're intentionally hard. We think the answers say a lot about the kind of committee the city might be recruiting for. Number one, does the city believe the available science and studies have established the public health harms from aviation noise and pollution? Number two, based on the SAMP EA, do we all agree there is no remaining evidence-based reason to believe the port will voluntarily limit its own expansion, even knowing of these harms to our public health? Number three, will this city bargain public health for airport expansion-related economic development? Number four, will the committee's primary 2025 objective be anything other than preparing the city to fully oppose the anticipated adverse FAA record of decision? So we have five recommendations relating to the formation of the committee. Number one, a prioritized project. Prepare the city for a legal response to an adverse FAA record of decision on the SAMP EA. Number two, provide training and technical support, including legal, to serve the needs of the prioritized project. Number three, seek to work with and co-finance with partner cities. Number four, transparency. Frequent reports to council and the public. Create media and outreach plans to support public awareness, participation, partnerships, and advocacy. And number five, adopt the approach of our 2017 committee. The mission: Prioritize strategies and actions to assure preservation of our quality of life. The style: Lead, not follow. The tone: Throw the metaphorical punch. Be smart. Use experts strategically. Thank you for the opportunity to share tonight.
Well, Steve, if you're seeing this online later, well done, and thank you so much for sending that when you couldn't be here. It takes some extra work, and I appreciate your willingness to do that, looking at the camera. So those are the organizations that came to speak in regard to our Airport Committee. So now I'm going to go to individuals who not only signed up to speak in regard to the Airport Committee, but also the Planning Commission right now in this segment. So I'll just start at the top. Airport Committee, Susan White. Were you planning on, I saw you earlier, Susan. You're not, okay, all right. Planning Commission, Lloyd Little.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, city managers, staff, and citizens. I'm here to advocate for a public planning commission. And I want to thank the new city manager for putting that out there. Really appreciate that. Somehow, we had one about a decade ago. It kind of disappeared. Nobody knows why. Anybody know why it disappeared? I don't. And it's been kept away from us for some reason. Not sure why about that either. But every other city around here has one, every connected city. And I know you worked with one in Texas, and there's a reason for them. They work. It puts the council, the managers of the city, the city staff, and the public together. It's holistic, and everybody works in harmony. We don't get blasted with these projects nobody knows about. They come out of nowhere. Nobody wants them. Nobody wants to pay for them. And then the projects people do support, who bring petitions for, the 1,500 signatures you brought last night, the Masonic Home has over 2,400 signatures from the city and surrounding cities. People wanted to keep the tree canopy. They come down here, bring petitions. And all of it kind of gets ignored and pushed away. And then these projects come out of nowhere, and nobody helped plan them. And it's like, there's a major disconnect here. We need to be working in a two-way street. It's got to be horizontal. The planning commissions, from what I understand, can be designed any way you like. They should represent each segment of the community: development, business, environmental, health. They should have different backgrounds, ethnicities, age groups, so you get full buy-in from the city and the public. And we actually create a city that the public wants and believes in, and it's not something that's forced on us that we don't want. And it also builds into the wisdom of all these wonderful people who make up our city. That's the true wealth. We're talking about making Des Moines a premier destination. If you're building a city that the people who live here don't even like is happening, why would other people from other places want to come here? It's got to be built from the ground up, from the people of the city and the public. And we're not asking for a public commission, planning commission. We're demanding it. We deserve one in the name of transparency, democracy, and a shared vision for this beautiful city of ours. And as for the Masonic Home, that shouldn't, no EIS should be put out there until a planning commission is reinstated.
Do you need to stick to the items on the?
Because a planning commission needs to review that. That needs to be reviewed by the people of the city, not one unknown person in the building department who is basically our planning commission now. That's got, that culture has got to go. That culture still remains somewhat in the council, at the managerial level, and the staff, and everybody I talked to, and all the broad-based groups around this city are done with that. That's got to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. So there is one person, Bill Linscott. You put Des Moines here. Where are you? I'm sorry. Did you want planning commission or airport, or are you here for peer and steps?
I'm for the steps.
Peer and steps? Okay, that's next segment. Okay, thanks, Bill. I'll save that for you. So I did take this because there's some organization here had gotten through this, so we took it a couple minutes early. Is there anybody who came in before the meeting began and expected to sign in to speak on Airport Committee or Planning Commission, and the signup sheet was gone because I had it? Anybody? Okay. So that's good for public comment, then, on those two items. So that's good for public comment, then, on those two items. So the next up, next item up is a presentation on the Marina Steps and the Pier. And I'm going to hand this over. I think it's going to be a team effort here. The purpose of this item is to hear a briefing on the options for moving forward with the pier and the Marina Steps. I'm handing it over to city manager Catherine Cafrey.
Good evening, Mayor and council and everyone. Like the mayor said, Mike and I are going to be doing a joint presentation. But first, let me just say thank you to everyone that's here, and I appreciate your ability to come February 6th instead of February 13th. The reason why we moved it is truly so we could do this in a setting where things aren't as rushed. There's not as many things on the agenda, and that was the real intent behind it. So many of you were probably contacted by our city clerk's office or saw it on Facebook, and I appreciate those of you that helped spread the word about this meeting being tonight. Okay. We're going to go through quite a bit of information tonight, but just to sort of give you a preview. Since our presentation several weeks ago in January, which first introduced this issue with the Marina Steps and the budget, and that sort of led to the pier concerns, we've received dozens of questions, really, many of them from the city council, asking for us to sort of provide background information, look at options, can you explore this? We also, we're definitely looking at questions we got in from the public as well. So this is a presentation that's about a lot of things, really, but in that way to hopefully address many of the concerns we've heard. So we'll go through a history of the bond funding, an overview of the projects with obviously a focus on the Marina Steps and Redondo Pier, project timelines, and then we're outlining some options for moving forward. For the benefit of the council, even though this is such a massive topic before you tonight, I do want to sort of lower some of the pressure in the sense that the real, like, decision we're looking for tonight, although we take any and all feedback, obviously, is really whether or not you want to move forward with a contract with KPFF engineers for a hundred thousand dollars for the value engineering. And we're going to talk about all the things that that relates to, because I know for many of you, the decision on that contract is really a decision about the project as a whole. But really, that's why the motion in the packet is what it is, because that's really the specific contract coming before you tonight. First, in 2023, the city council authorized bond funds for a total of twenty-five point one million dollars. The bond ordinance and related materials when those funds were issued outlined the projects that those funds could be used for. So you'll see which these are on the screen. The Redondo Fishing Pier and Restroom, the Memorial Drive Flag Triangle, the parking system, the Marina LMN dock replacement, and the Steps. The original funding in the ordinance in 2023 identified these specific projects and gave some original bond allocation amounts. Now, this is not the project budgets. I'll talk about that on the next slide. This is really, of that original twenty-five point one million dollars, these were the projects that those funds could be used for. Money can be changed around between those projects with no issue. It's really, for the purposes of this, kind of one bucket of money. But to change the projects on the list, the council would need to amend the ordinance, which they can do through the normal process for that. But really, to add new projects, they would have to go through that process. But moving funding around between the projects can be done easily at the staff and administrative level. I also want to take a second to address some concerns I saw online of how does the city have millions of dollars for projects, yet we keep hearing about this budget crunch? And much like school districts, bonds are really only for capital projects. We can't use these funds for staffing, or operations, or more police officers, or anything like that. These dollars can only be used for capital projects, and that's, again, similar to what school districts have to do. But that's a little bit of background on why you're seeing some big numbers when at the same time you hear about our budget crunch. So as I said, that original project list had certain bond allocation amounts. What that means is, of that twenty-five point one million dollars, the staff in 2023 slated certain amounts of money to go to different projects. But even in 2023, I think staff and the council recognized that those funds were not enough to cover all those projects. So what you see before you are original funding sources and budgets from these projects from 2023. So you could already see, you know, projects had additional funds coming from the Marina Enterprise Fund, if that was applicable, one-time taxes, ARPA funds, some grants. So already, sort of, there were other funding sources added to these projects. I want to walk through some of the project, the status and timing on some of them, and then we'll really focus on the fishing pier and the Marina Steps. So regarding the Redondo Fishing Pier, redesign is currently underway. At the January 23rd council meeting, the council unanimously voted to authorize an engineering contract to continue that design. The other big factor on this project is that we need permits from the Corps of Engineers and the state in order to do this work. And so we are, we have those permits, but we've had to amend some of them. Mike will be able to talk more about that when we get into detail on the pier. But the timing and the approval of those permits is very critical to this project moving forward. So I really want to highlight that because we're going to show a path to the council that we would fully fund the Redondo Pier, like, tonight. But the timing of those permits is a critical item for the project to move forward. Also, as some background, this project was bid in 2024. The bid received was eight point two million. The original construction budget was a little under five, so it came in over budget, which is what led to the redesign. The next project is Marina Steps. That's the item that we're really, kind of, is sort of the nexus of this, because it's really about value engineering, which would be a way to look at the project, reduce the scope, reduce the budget. We'll talk in more detail about that, but that's sort of its current status, is that's pending. That project was also bid in 2024. A bid received for eleven point seven million, but the budget was eight point one. So another project that was a little over three million dollars over budget when the bid was received. The Redondo restroom, if you, many of you live down there, you see it. That is nearing completion. That'll be open in April. Same with the paid parking. Obviously, the parking at the Marina Beach Park is already completed and open. Then the council, just recently, in the last few meetings, awarded the contract for the dock replacement of the LMNN docks at the Marina. That happily came in under budget, and we'll talk about those funds in a second. And that construction is beginning soon. And then the Memorial Drive Flag Triangle, which is a project at that intersection of that road, the design is completed. It's currently out to bid. Okay, so let's talk about, if we're just focusing on the pier and the steps for kind of the remainder of this, let's talk about what funding is available for the projects. The Marina Steps does have two grants associated with it that combined total one point five million dollars, and those grant funds can only be used for the steps. They cannot be transferred to another project. For the pier, we have earmarked a little under a million dollars, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in REIT, which is real estate excise tax dollars for that project. So those are dollars that are sort of tied to those projects. Because I said the bond dollars can really be moved around the projects on that approved list, when we look at what are the remaining bond funds, the docks came in under budget by one point six million. We had earmarked seven point eight for the steps and three point five for the pier, because all of those dollars can be entered, you know, moved around the projects. We really have thirteen million dollars of bond funds. Before we get into costs, I want to take a second to just talk about the different factors that go into costs. First, there are things called soft costs, which is design and engineering and permitting. For both of these projects, the pier and the steps, the city has already expended funds on that, right? Because these projects have been under design, have been engineering. That's the preparation before you go out to bid. Hard costs are really the construction bid. So the, you know, the real number to get the work done, the shovels in the ground, you're putting the materials in. And then there's also contingency and construction management. The further out you are from a project being done, the bigger your contingency, because you have more unknowns. The closer you get to a project being done, you have a lot less unknowns. Your risk is a lot lower, and so that contingency can get a lot smaller. So for the projects we are going to talk about tonight, I think prudently, Public Works has added a pretty healthy contingency. And that is, again, because we're at design stage, and you want to be conservative with your estimates, and the contingency is a key way we do that. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike to talk a little bit about the costs and the scope of both projects.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Mike Slavon, your Public Works Director, for the record. So the Marina Steps is where I'm going to start with, the status of the project and the cost. As the city manager spoke earlier, what the big decision we're asking for today is, can we continue? Do you want to wish us to continue with taking a look at the steps and value engineering? And I'll talk a little bit more about what that is. Value engineering is what we're taking a look at, and I'll show you some pictures that we've had drawn up, is changing some of the things within the stairs. And it's a combination of different ways to do that. Some of them are, if you delete one item, then you also get savings in structural wall. If you delete another item, it might only be visual, but still functional. And then there's amenities that can be deleted. And so it's a plus and minus game on how you do that. We did take a really good look at it after getting our bids, and specifically focused on some of the items like specialty materials. We had decorative concrete on horizontal surfaces, things like pulling some of that out. We had some monies for wood logs. And then there are engineering things to simplify the project, like the cantilevered outlooks. Taking those out not only reduces cantilevered outlooks, but also reduces the structural wall that holds those outlooks up. And then there's just reduced reductions in straight scope, like, right now, the stairs as bid had power undergrounding on Cliff Ave and 223rd. We could delay that portion of the project until we went ahead and did 223rd in the future sometime. So there are ways to move some of those in and out, and those are what we're looking at. Taking a look at a lot of those items, our initial cut was one, one and a half million, and we could still maintain a pretty equivalent scope to what we want. There'd be some changes, but it would still be a really, a place-making type project that people would want to come and enjoy, and come down and see the waterfront and see the Marina. We think we can get the construction cost down to, it was eleven seven at the last, and we'd be somewhere around ten, ten-two, somewhere in there. And then we need some contingency and some construction management funds in there, so we're at about twelve million total for this project. We could continue to reduce additional scope out of the project and build a baseline project. And then there's opportunities in the future, maybe, for like, if we were, if we took out the children's playground, the grade would be there, and we could add it in the future with an additional grant or additional funds in the future. So there are ways to build the skeleton of the project and then add in the future also. So those are all the types of things we're trying to figure out right now. This is kind of, I mentioned last time, we were here earlier in January, that's kind of like, you know, an ice cream cone or a banana split, right, or a sundae, where you can take and move things around and add different things, right? So what we bid the first time is the full cone, double scoop, whipped cream, cherry. And now we're like, hey, we can't afford that, right? But we still want some ice cream. And so you get a little bit less strawberry, do you take out the whipped cream? Do you add sprinkles instead of the cherry? There are different options out there. So, and that's really important about how we're looking at our rebid. As we go to the rebid of the project, working with the designers, we're going to basically step back, and we're going to get a baseline bid, the least amount that builds the structure we need to make the connectivity, and then have pricing bid additive alternates for each of those other items. So if we want to add in a spray park, we'll have that price. If you want to add in undergrounding of the power, we'll have that price. So we'll have different prices, and we can basically add into what our budget allows us to get and to what funding we can find. And so this is, these are some of the renderings we've had done. This is the original design as bid that came in at eleven point two million dollars. So you see the children's vertical-type playground on the left, the spray park on the bottom left. You see the stairs. There's the stormwater feature, and then the overlooks are there. You have, of course, it's a single-loaded, I call it, because when I worked on similar steps in Tacoma at the university, we double-sided them, but you couldn't do that here. So you have a single-loaded step, all ADA authorized. You see that you have the driftwood logs as a major piece. Those are actually very expensive, and they're on our list to be separated out also. And of course, all the ramping is all ADA qualified and meets all the standards of that. So that's what we have. That's what we bid. And so this is an example of the next picture, and you see how we took out the cantilevered. There's three cantilevered. It's kind of small, but you take out those cantilevered pieces, which then also gives you some savings on the wall. So it's kind of a combined savings. Next slide. Then here is the spray park being deleted, and that's what that would look like. And there's also some options here where, you know, you could delete the spray park, but you may very well, before you pour all that expensive concrete down there, you may want to put pipes or sleeves in to add it in the future if you desire to, right? So there's options to do, you know, like, an eighty percent cut. So there are those two that we'll be looking into. And then another major one is the, this puts the spray park back in as an option, just to show you what it might look like. And that's without the children's playground, but you'll notice that the slope is cut there. So if we ever wanted to add that in the future as a municipality or a city, we could. And you could apply for grants in the future for a park to try to build that there. And so that kind of gives you, that kind of closes out what we're looking at with regards to, with regards to the steps themselves and that project, and how we can try to deliver the project with the funding we have available. The second project, of course, is the Redondo Pier project. The first thing, one of the first things I did when I got here in July, because this price had just come back over budget when I started as Public Works Director, was take a look at how do we, how do we keep the project going? And so we did some changes of some of the funding, where we put, we had received three different grants, two from our legislator through the Department of Commerce, and one through RCO, the recreational office down in Olympia. And those were slated for, the RCO was for the restrooms already, and the other two were specifically for the pier. But we had the opportunity, because the restroom did come in within bid, so we split that bid and phased the project. And we moved the grants with permission through the state to do the first part of the project first, and that is the Redondo Restrooms. And so that's what we did first, and so that part is done, and it's out of the project. It should be done, we're hoping we'll get substantial completion by April and full use by, full use by the beginning of May. And that includes the parking also. So then we stepped back, and we took a look at what drove the cost of the pier up, and why were they like that? And realistically, the major single cause for the cost increase that when we talked to the contractors that did not bid, because we only had the one bid, was the fact that due to our environmental permits and our core permits and the tribe's request through the core, was that we can maintain twelve-inch piers, which then requires a whole bunch of other things. They have to go a lot deeper, which adds a lot of risk in the pier design, or, excuse me, pile design. And then you also have to fill those piles, because they're much smaller, with concrete to add strength. And then your vents that go across the base that goes across horizontally that the decking goes on, those were going to be, in order to make up for the fact that the pilings were smaller, were going to be precast concrete, which was very heavy, which then required us to bring in a waterborne, waterside crane to lift those heavy pieces. So all of those things led to a high cost. It limited the amount of contractors that had the capability to bid and be competitive. So when we didn't award the contract, we went back, took a look at this, and said, okay, what can we do to help bring the cost down? And so we engaged the environmental, the core, and the environmental agencies and said, hey, we can't build it at this price without making the piers a little bit bigger, or the pilings a little bit bigger. And so we were in the process now redesigning based upon the contract that the council approved last week. And we're going to eighteen-inch pilings, which means we don't have to fill them with concrete, which means we don't have to put a steel cage in that concrete and evac them. We can also go about a little bit more than half the depth, which makes a lot less risk when you drive the piles, and really reduces the costs. When you drive a skinny pile that deep, some of them fail sometimes, they divert, and then you have to do another one. So they were expecting failures in the previous design, which adds cost, because the contractor's got to, you know, he's going to make his profit. because the contractor's got to, you know, he's going to make his profit. And if he figures one of every four are going to fail, he's going to price those in. And so the wider piles, the 18-inch piles are much more standard and can be used. But because we wanted to use those piles, and also the wider piles allowed us to go to a steel caps, steel vents instead of the precast concrete, which reduces the size of the equipment we need seaside to bring in to make this project work. There'll still be some of that, but there won't be the big giant crane to lift the precast sections. So that required us to go in and amend our permits to make those changes. And they were amenable to it since we tried to do it the other way first. And so they're working on it now. We're hoping to hear back from the core and the other agencies. The core is first. We also have a letter to the Department of Ecology that they have to confer that it's within our, within the scope and that environmentally, we're not hurting anything too high above by making the pilings 18 inches instead of, instead of 12. And then it's got to do the rounds with several other agencies like NIMPs and stuff. They'll review the core's recommendations and see if they have an objection. So that's what we're working on right now is simultaneously, since we had the contract awarded in the previous council meeting, is the redesign of the pier. It's all structural. Visually, it'll look like what you've seen in previous pictures and meetings. But structurally, it will have steel caps and basically six inch wider pilings are the two big major differences. And that really changes, we're hoping it will change the cost effectiveness of the pier and bring the price down to somewhere between five and a half and $6 million. And then we have some contingency construction management, that's about seven. So that's the hope for the Redondo Pier. And we're pushing forward to get that done as soon as we can. If we do not get the permits by end of April, first week in May, we will probably not be able to build this this year just because we can't construct without the permits. And bidding on that short timeline, we'd miss it. I don't know how many people are familiar with the fish window, which really only allowed to build from, you know, July through February in the water. And so that would make us come back and we wouldn't be back, starting back up to July of '26. But that's the driver, the driver on timeline is, on the pier is the permits. And then, of course, the decision on, we don't have enough money for both projects simultaneously. And so the council is going to have to make that decision for us. And then this is one of the old renderings. We didn't pay to get another set of renderings because structurally it wasn't, the structural differences are immaterial to what the public will see. Unless you're walking under the pier, you'll see steel instead of concrete. And that's, I think I hand it back to Catherine.
So Mike walked you through both kind of what value engineering means, what is the status of the design on both these projects? And are, we are hoping, conservative estimates for the price on those projects. Conservative meaning we've rounded up every chance we get because we are striving to not overpromise and underdeliver, which I think this community and this council is sensitive to. So knowing that, assuming the Marina Steps is 12 million, the Redondo Pier is seven. And again, the steps assumes that kind of base level of value engineering. If the council wanted to value engineer more, which means kind of simplify the project even more, you could lower the price additionally. When you factor out the money that's already been earmarked for both of those projects, the grant, the real estate excise tax funds, you're looking at needing 10 and a half million for the steps and 6.2 million for the pier. So remember, we on an earlier slide looked at what were our bond funds available, and they were 13 million. So really what we're, the gap that we're trying to fill is the 3.7 million. So we'd like to present a couple of options. Of course, these are not inclusive of every possible variable of how you could do these projects or introduce new projects, but they're intended as sort of a jumping off point for the council's discussion. Option one is you do both projects. So the new pier project continues, you fully fund it with bond proceeds. So that project is considered funded and moves forward. The steps goes through the value engineering process to reduce scope and lower budget, as we just discussed. And then the staff would identify more funds for the steps and bring that back to the council. So some areas we would look for that additional funding would be grants. We've had some preliminary conversations with the Department of Commerce that were positive, that are supportive of the project. We would look at, we actually in the finance committee meeting just talked about the one-time tax fund. It's a fund that's just for capital projects. We would look at what funding is available there. We would look at delaying non-critical CIP capital projects. In our kind of CIP plan, that's the schedule of projects we need, we have things in there that could be delayed a year or two without a negative impact. There's some plans to look at the Founder's Lodge at the beach park that could be delayed. There's resurfacing the City Hall parking lot that could be delayed. There's some kind of facility improvements that could be delayed a year or two that would not, we think, be, present a huge issue. We think we could get between a million and 1.25 from delaying those projects. And then additionally, we could just look at our other funding sources. We could go back to the REIT funds that are for capital projects and sort of see what we could cobble together. So we would value engineer and bring back to the council some ideas to close that gap. The second option is you fully fund the steps only. You use the bond proceeds and move forward. You would be left with $1 million of remaining bond funds. Another option is to fully fund the Redondo Pier only. You fund those with the bond proceeds and then you're left with $6 million of bond funds that the council can explore what they want to do with. And then, of course, option four is you could amend the bond ordinance to include new projects. So if the council wanted to pursue that option and identify new projects to be built with bond funds, we would want to move expeditiously due to arbitrage, as was in the packet, and I've sent you all correspondence about this. Due to bond funds and how financing works, we do sort of have a time period we need to use these funds. And so we, if that's the option the council wanted to go for, we would highly encourage we move that process along. Timeline, Mike went over this a little bit, so I won't repeat all of it. But I want to highlight, the things that are in yellow are times we would come back to the city council. So at the beginning, I said, you know, I know this is a huge topic, right? With 50,000 different ways you could go with it, but really the specific item tonight before you is do you want to pursue, will you approve the contract to value engineer the steps? But there are other points, if the council wanted to continue with these projects, that we would come back to you for council input approval decisions, whether it's showing you the value engineered design and seeing, does this still meet your needs or not? Bids, bid awards, so I don't want the public or the council to feel like this is your only shot to talk about these projects. There could be so many ways the discussion for the council goes right now, but I wanted to sort of leave this as sort of a place to start. So I'll turn it over to the mayor, but we're open to any input or answering questions or if you want to take public comments first.
Thank you. This is what we're going to do first. So we have the key questions. Could you, just for the sake of the questions that I'm going to open to and the public comment, put the options up there?
Sure.
Okay. So what we're going to do is begin right now with closing the presentation portion with key questions before public comments. So just questions from the council right now for clarity and for the sake of the people who will be giving comment in a moment. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, there's a question for Mr. Slavin. Given the current unknowns about federal funding and the difficulty that contractors who may or may not have counted on federal funds that may not be there, is it your expectation we would get more contractors bidding on either or both of these projects? Because the market essentially has changed.
I believe that may be the case with the stairs, Deputy Mayor, but I think that the pier itself, the driver for, since it's marine work, it's a much more limited pool. And the reason we had the limited bids on the pool was the type of construction. And the firms that have the big cranes were really the only ones that were going to be competitive the way the thing was designed. And so I think that it's going to open up more opportunity for Redondo. I think that there may be, the construction market is cooling down. I mean, of course, when we sold the bonds, we were in the middle of some of the highest construction inflation the country's ever seen in this region, and it was, you know, 20, 25%, which is part of the reason we're in the situation we're in now. And so I think we would get more competitive bids at this time, given the way the market is going. So I think that's a valid question. We can't say for sure until we go out. But the sooner we go out, probably the better our odds are, because inflation is still there, although it's less than it was two years ago, a year ago.
I'm going to check really quick. Councilmember Nutting, this is a good time if you have a question.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself here.
I figured.
No, I'm good.
You're good right now? All right, thank you. So then we'll continue down. So Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes, excellent presentation. Mike, can you talk about what the value, what the value would be doing value engineering would be to the project? Oh, sorry.
Could you, could you, I always forget to turn on the mic. I talk loud enough as it is sometimes, so. But talk about the, I guess, the pros and cons of the value engineering and option one and what that might bring to the table or give us a better picture in the future and so forth.
Well, I think we've invested, not to support, you know, the sunk cost theory, but the fact is we've invested a lot of money in this current design, including public time and public feedback and how we're going to do this. And if, for whatever reason, funding or whatever now is not the time to build the stairs, to come back and to reopen someone else's design and read, and try to do this last finishing touches on the design would be very inefficient, right? So I think it's valuable to have the complete set of plans. And if we need to go seek additional funding, whatever the council decides, and it might take us a little bit longer to actually do the construction, sitting on a complete set of plans for a project that someday this community wants and we're going to build is really, I think is the way to go. And then we'll have also a lot better information for the council, because we'll have some individual ideas and items that we can then pick and choose from if the council decides to go forward. So I think going forward with this at this time for the, with the additional funds is just a prudent choice. If the council still decides they want to build the stairs, it's the logical next step.
So that's my next question that leads into, and I'm going to ask both the city manager and you, because both of you have been familiar with projects that have brought benefit to the city. The steps in particular has been one where I think misunderstandings of what the possibilities of what it can bring to the city. So I'm asking you both, in your experiences that you've had in former jobs, could you talk about the benefits that it would bring to the community as a whole, kind of summarize?
Are you starting and I'll?
Yeah, do you want me to pick?
It's always best to let your boss have the last word. So I don't know how many people knows, but I came from a long period in Tacoma, and I got hired in Tacoma in '94. And our goal when I was hired, and I was there for 29 years, was to redo the Tacoma downtown. And as that, I was part of the environmental cleanup of the Foss, the esplanade of the Foss, the bridge of glass, helping do the RFPs to bring in the museums, the stairs through the university, the Prairie Line Trail with the connectivity of the university. And none of those projects, individual, whether it's the bridge of glass or the Prairie Line Trail or the esplanade, none of them made money for the city. But what the city could do is set the place, do some placemaking, and set the connectivity for the community so that businesses can then come in and improve the economic welfare of everyone, and everyone's tide rises. So I look at the stairs coming here as a, you know, when I was hired, they were telling me about these projects that they were great public projects, and I would be, I would love to help make them come forward. But I look at them and I'm saying that's what this community is trying to do. They're trying to connect the downtown to the water, to the beach park, give people access to the water, Redondo, parking to help, help give better access to that. And there's lots of other projects that, you know, aren't the two we're talking about today, that are helping the city to get there, that hopefully will spur future economic development growth. And so I think they're good projects, and I think the city, over time, it took Tacoma 30 years, I was there 29 of them, to see some of that benefit. And so I think it's, I think it's a long-term vision. City building is a long-term vision. And I think it's gonna, I think it's going to get there. That's my personal opinion.
I would say the, you know, I came from out of state, very different world, but I spent a decade working on a project that was a redevelopment of a downtown that had a lot of placemaking elements. I remember we started it in November 2014, and they opened the doors on it in October of 2024. So 10 solid years. But it was a large project. It was, you know, 40 acres and a lot of complexity. I would say that I do believe placemaking and projects like this can do a lot to also give the people that live there like pride in their community and excitement and energy. I do think there's also a lot to be said for making a public investment that sends a sign, I think, to the private community to maybe express interest in the area. That being said, when you sign up to be a city staff person and not an elected official, you recognize your job is to provide good information, good data, and recommendations. But ultimately, our work reflects the community and the elected officials. So I don't say that to wiggle out of an answer, but I say that with a recognition of what our role is. Mike and I both think the steps are great. We also think the pier is great. We also think there's a lot of projects that if we had a bottomless pit of money and got to play, you know, SimCity with this community, we could want to work on. But really, it's important that our work reflects what the community wants and what the council sees as the future direction.
Thank you.
Any further clarity questions before public comment? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I have absolutely no questions, but so.
Serious?
No, I'm not serious. Like not at all.
Just didn't know, okay.
But excellent, excellent work. And so, let's see here. I'm sorry if I'm obsessing, but originally, the significant portion of the deck had to be redone to be opaque. And, yeah. And I just, it doesn't, and I just, I mean, if that's just not real, but I just want to make sure that, but we really had to redesign it to be, or is that the current thing?
So Councilmember, the decking is not changed, and what you see is the slats. So the design solution that was accepted, there's gaps between the individual slats that make it opaque.
The entire width?
Yes, the entire width.
Okay, no, that's different, because I just remember that like about a quarter of it was opaque.
Right, that was. No, that is, that, my understanding is that is no longer in these plant, in this plan set. So basically, the final design did not have, you're talking about the glass clear.
No, it was brown. It was, there was one side that was.
So that was, that was the walkway, the brown piece you're talking about was a walkway so that high heels would not get caught. Because people were worried, people want to go out there and do prom pictures and everything. And in the original design, the feedback was do not put that there. So there was, there was like a three-foot section of brown decking that was solid and not opaque, which is, this is, Mike can get through this because it's got slats in it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm using, yes, but the idea was, there were also issues of vertigo. I mean, people did not like looking down through the thing. I'm just, but you're saying this is what it is now. Okay, fine. Okay, moving on.
Councilmember Harris, if you don't mind, there's a couple other answers to your question that I recall. Part of it was an ADA compliance, so it was a walkway. And the other one was with fishing and so forth, acting on the pier, there was a concern that tackle would get caught in the grates and things like that, even though we were required to have that light pass through. So those were the factors initially of why it was the way it was.
I just, I wish there were clearer renderings of that, because, you know, sorry, practical people are going to walk on it. And let's see here. So regarding the, so let's say it gets approved. We approve the Redondo Pier now, and then you don't make the fish window. Are the contractor is going to be okay with that delay? And possibly, I mean, are there any inflation risks?
Absolutely, Councilmember Harris. There is, we would not bid the project until we had permits in hand. So we may have to, if we don't get the permits in time to bid this cycle, which is why we're pushing up against the window on May 1st, you know, because then we have to bid it and then mobilize, open the bids, mobilize the contractor, get them on site in July to start construction, right? So it's a very tight window. If we get our permits in time. So it's a very tight window. If we get our permits in time, then yes, we can meet that window. If we do not, we will be bidding this project probably next March, next April and not this, and not this May.
And I'm not asking for a crystal ball, but I know the difference in construction inflation is, is different from the CPI.
It's, it's much higher than CPI.
So is it like 10 right now?
Right now, it's running around four and a half, five. In the previous year, it was 10 and the year before that was 15.
Okay, and so going back to the Marina Steps, if you don't do the power now, I mean, i- i- is that simply a visual thing? Or are there any implications for the rest of the Marina?
It's, it's simply a visual thing now. The power would stay and operate with the Marina as it is now.
And let's see here, one, one last thing. So, you know, the more stuff you take away, the better the steps look. I'm, just for me personally, no, I mean, I mean, it just, it's the more, the, so for what it's worth. But the, along the edge of these, of the stairs, I wish there was a better way to look at, like, I'm assuming there's a banister, right?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. There's, there's banisters along the stairs, yes.
Okay, no, I'm just thinking of that edge and people looking down and I'm thinking of graffiti and, I don't know. I'm just, I'm not trying to borrow trouble, I'm just.
No, I, I, I understand. That's, you know, those types of things are, are difficult with each. Right now, we're looking at a, it's basically a, 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 a half finger wall. So it's like a rock wall with, in cages. So graffiti would be hard. You have the water feature on the below that will be swampy. Is it possible it gets graffiti? Everything to get graffiti?
No, you said to me once, you're a visual person.
Yeah.
So I'm just, and, and, okay, finally, and one of the possibilities would be that the logs would go away.
Correct.
And so that would just be landscaping?
It would be, it would be landscaping and we could add logs at a later date if we're, if we're trying to get the project done. The logs were about $140,000 to get the logs installed and locked down.
Well, you can go into my, I'm sorry, okay, I'm done.
I'm just, I'm saying, so we went through the list of items and, and, and we're preparing for reductions.
Thank you so much.
Any other clarity questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Oxiger?
So in looking at the options here, you back up to the options with the options one, two, three, and four. So because of the, because of the uncertainty regarding the, whether or not we can make this initial fish window or would have to wait, it seems that, that we have to build in for that contingency and there's eight, or $6 million left over. This is under option three, that we may consume that if we have to, if we have to wait. So this then is, you know, my que, that essentially is my question. We may have to use that, that number and right now it's acting as a cushion. And it's going to be totally dependent upon the, the, the permitting process.
Absolutely. Councilmember Oxiger, so there is at least, I sleep on them, 30 variables in this problem. And, you know, delay of the permits, what's next steps, you know, and how do we go about, about doing all of that, right? So if we had a delay, we would definitely need, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, when I was speaking with the city manager, I requested a priority from the council because we would, by the time, depending upon how the timeline is going back to the schedule, you know, we'd have a priority project and a, and a secondary project. And, you know, so you're right. If we delay a year, will we need a little bit more money for the pier? Probably, maybe. I'm hoping that we'll still be able to get it done under seven, which is one of the reasons why I asked the city manager that. But I'm not sitting on any bids right now, all right? And as the city manager asked me, she goes, what do you think, you know, tariffs would do to the price of steel? Your crystal ball is as good as mine. That's another one of the 30 variables. So it's, it, everything is out there and we're just trying to move these forward and so that we can tick them off, right? We got, we got the parking done, we're getting the memorial triangle done, we're trying to get the next one done. And at the end, one of them is going to be there and it's going to be a little bit short cash and we're going to be looking for additional money. And that's just how it is. And so that's what we're trying to work on.
So to a large extent, then, the question is, do we want to complete one?
While we're still working on funding for the other. I can't, I can't bid two projects when both of them don't have enough money.
Right. So we could be, if we don't make a choice now, then we could be sitting here in this exact same position a year from now.
Correct.
Thank you.
I want to add to that though, because I, I mean, additionally, the longer we wait, the less our 13 million is worth 13 million, you know, as you know. I do think it, I, what Mike said about it being prudent to do the value engineering so you have the data. So if you do put the plans on the shelf, at least you have a way to get the ice cream cone with the different ingredients. That is still valuable information. And I think if we do that, if you look at that schedule, it sort of allows us to hopefully get some type of indications on our permits before really you're making any decisions that you can't, you know, undo.
Okay, councilmember Grace Matsui.
I'm struggling to try and make sure I have my timeline in place. And so I'm thinking back to the Marina presentation that was over, I believe at the Activities Center, right? And that was in fall of 2023, is that correct? So the, if you put the steps back up there, at, at one point during the year of 2023, how many different design ideas were going to go into this location? In terms of options, was it stairs, I believe, multi-purpose building, a hotel?
And so councilmember, that was before my tenure here. I know there was talk of a hotel with, in this location with that being the grade break before stairs. I don't know about, there was a multi-purpose building that was not part of this, but down further that I'm aware of. But there may have been, I, I don't have that, all of that history in my belt.
So the design of putting this feature in was not actually finalized until fall of 2023?
I, I couldn't, we, it was finalized when we sold the bonds, which would have been this, the stairs.
2023 was when the bonds.
Yeah, so at the time of the bonds, the initial renderings of this design were what was, what was envisioned. And that's, that's as far as I go back as to where the bonds were.
Right, but only two months, I believe, before? It could have been something else.
Yeah, that, that's possible. I, I wasn't here for it, so I don't.
Thank you.
All right, any more clarity questions before public comment? One more check with you, councilmember Nutting, if you had any other questions as we've moved, as we've moved through this?
I'm, I'm still good, thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So with these questions done, I, you have one?
I do.
Okay, councilmember Harris?
Hypothetically, this is a city attorney question. Can we amend the bond ordinance without, for a different purpose, without allocating any money?
Yeah, you don't have the allocations in the bond ordinance anyway.
Okay, no, I, I, but I was told that basically to add other projects, that only LM and N docks were. But could we add to another Marina project, make it eligible without allocating any money tonight?
You can't amend the bond ordinance tonight, but you could at a future date without allocating money.
Can or cannot?
You can.
Thank you. That's it?
Okay, what we're going to do now is open for, it's public comment on this subject, on the pier and steps. So for this segment, we'll only be hearing comments that address the subject of the presentation. So please, you know, we've got a lot of people, please stay to just the, what you've heard in the presentation tonight. We ask that you keep your comments respectful. Please recognize that any person speaking or acting in a way that's disruptive to the meeting will be removed. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and city of residence when you come to the podium. Now, I did make some promises to a few people, so I'm going to double check and make sure that they are here tonight. Cal Smith. Cal, would you like, you pass on that one? All right, thank you. Thank you for being here. Issakar Nistrian. Jeremy lost the connection? Okay. Okay, just, all right. One more person, Kay Van. Is Kay here tonight? Kay, would you like to make comments tonight? You didn't get to last time. You would, okay. We're need to, come on up to the podium. We need to call councilmember Nutting. Yeah. Is it this one? That we did what? This first two. Hi, councilmember Nutting, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, great. And are you able to hear this conversation that's going on very well?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, so up to, for public comment right now, beginning with Kay Van. Come on forward, Kay. We've got three minutes.
My name is Kay Van from the Redondo Beach area. Thank you for listening to my concern or, or suggestions, my share. I would like each one of you to look closely at the projects that we have right now. The one that's real important right now, right, or was, we're looking at right now is the steps and the, the pier and Redondo. Looking at Redondo, that pier has been there for years and years. The last five years, it's been an eyesore and it, no one can use it for the last, what, four years? And I'm down there every day, six years, thank you. I'm there every day, seven days a week. I'm down there at least 30 hours a day, a week. I, I get asked, why is, why is it closed? Why can't we go fishing? I have family that comes up to me, which, fishing pool, wants to go fishing almost every day in the summer. Why? I don't have, I, I ask them to come and talk to you guys. So you have the pier, you have the steps. Steps is not, you're looking at fix, building the step. Projects has not, has started. Why are we trying to focus on the things that has not started yet? Why not focus on the things that's already there, make it look better? Same thing as the city downtown. You have building that looks icky. It's, it's probably not up to par. Why not put money into that? Make it look welcoming instead of building something, starting a project that's not, has started yet. So I would like to ask each one of you, look hardly into your soul and understand where a, a resident is coming from, not just the residents here. It's the surrounding city guests that comes in and enjoy down in Redondo. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. Appreciate you being here again. Next up, Patrice Thoreau.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Buxton, pro, Mayor Protem Steinmetz, city council members, our city manager and staff, and of course, the citizens. I'm here tonight to comment on the city of Des Moines' number one waterfront resource and community legacy. And that to me is the Des Moines Marina. And the use of tonight, the application would be option four for the use of other uses for the bond ordinance other than the first option one, two, or three. Built in 1970, the 55-year-old Marina requires constant repair and maintenance. Marina staff have done wonders keeping it maintained and operational, but its docks and bulkheads needs the city's attention now. It's the only public Marina in Puget Sound between Seattle and Tacoma. It's the city's number one attraction for the enjoyment of citizens, Marina tenants, visitors, and the Puget Sound boaters. It's the poster child for regional tourism and economic development, bringing business opportunities and livability to our town. For decades, the Marina Enterprise Fund saved the city from financial ruin by transferring approximately $500,000 each year to the city's general fund. Some of you might not know that, but that budget was used to balance, that money was used to balance our budget in the good old days. The transfer of these Marina Enterprise Funds resulted in millions of deferred capital projects at the Marina. The 2024 Comprehensive Marina Master Plan, which includes the Marina improvements and upland areas like the steps, has identified many necessary repair and replacement improvements. The highest need being aging bulkheads and docks and associated infrastructure totaling about $90 million needed to ensure the continued physical and economic viability of the Marina. And now we have the project, the Marina docks for LM and N, but there's a lot more to do. And we can't afford to wait another 10, 15, 30 or more years to start protecting the Marina's aging infrastructure from crumbling seawalls, sinking docks possibly, outdated, outdated utilities due to deteriorating building materials, erosion, and the rising level of Puget Sound and King Tides. We've had lots of King Tides lately. And we can't afford to lose our future. The Marina is our economic driver that puts Des Moines on the map and the reason many citizens chose to live here. In June of 2023, the city council passed the $25 million council manic bond for the projects being discussed here tonight. Tonight, I ask the city council to make a bold move, save our waterfront legacy, make the Marina the priority before adding new landside projects such as the Marina Steps. Please apply the unexpended, unexpended $1.6 million Marina Dock Project Fund proceeds to provide additional Marina Dock and infrastructure replacements. Please direct the seven, almost $8 million Marina Steps Project Bond proceeds to provide additional Marina Dock replacements. And please continue to use Marina paid parking fees for Marina infrastructure projects into the future. Let's protect the Marina's future. It's your and our legacy project. And thank you for your service to our community. I know this is a tough job, so I just want to thank you for being here and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrice. Next up, Bill Lynn Scott.
Good evening, council, mayor, deputy mayor, city manager, staff, everybody gathered here tonight. I'm Bill Lynn Scott. First on the Redondo Fishing Pier, I feel like that is priority number one. It's, it's a mainstay on the waterfront. It's used and benefited by many. It supports our vision as a preferred waterfront destination. It demonstrates our commitment to the environment, stewards of the sound, and it's the reason people come here. And to not do that leaves a, you know, a structure, a derelict structure in the water that people will see driving by wondering what in the world is going on here. All that bond money and this, okay? So that should be the first. I'm on kind of the option three part. Let's get, get that pier done. Now, on the steps, on the steps in the beginning, and the newbies don't remember this, nothing before 2023, but when you took that bus ride down to look at the Harbor Steps, everybody came back and says, we got to have one of these right here. They never looked anywhere else, never had another option. It's been steps all the way. It fit into that parcel A a lot of ways. It was a sliver against a hotel for a while. And, and as things morphed and changed, all of a sudden, it filled the whole parcel A. It grew and filled the whole parcel A with its structure. And they forgot about the fact that the reason we wanted that was to connect a pedestrian pathway from the Marina to the downtown for the benefit of the downtown growth. That isn't even addressed anymore unless you look at part two. Part two, which is out there, is the 223rd Green Street connection, the rest of the story. So this looks like it's a $12 million deal if you stick with what you're going to do. But it doesn't connect until you put a $20 million Green Street project in, which isn't due until about the 2031, 2034 timeframe. So when we talk about the connect- So when we talk about the connection that we originally started with, we ought to talk about both pieces, and the value of both pieces, and with our financial state. You're our, you were the stewards, right, of our financial health. You need to make some decisions, tough decisions, about what we're gonna do and when we're gonna do it. But for us to talk in terms of just this massive and beautiful hillside that gets you from the bottom of the marina to the top of that bank, that's where it stops. After that, there's no sidewalks down the way. There's, there's a dirt path on part of that. That is not a signature entrance to the north end of the marina. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So, next up, we have Catherine Colburn. Oh, okay. Alright. Next up, Melanie Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I've lived at Redondo for four-point-five years now. I do enjoy the Des Moines waterfront. It is so aesthetically pleasing with the farmer's market, music, marina, pier, beach, concert venue, beautifully attended flower boxes, quarter duck, fairy, and I also enjoy the Des Moines restaurants. There is plenty of draw already. The ice cream cone is full. I do have pride in the Des Moines area, and I really greatly enjoy going there. After visiting Des Moines from my home at Redondo Beach, I return home to broken-down Redondo Beach. It makes me feel very mad and sad, and I do not want to feel that way about my home. It's very disturbing. I was greatly disappointed to learn that the Redondo Pier renovation project was delayed. Why are we not listing the benefits of the pier? I've mentioned in the past that I'm a transplant from the north end, the Edmonds area, which is a beautiful beach community, and I'm not used to living in a community where repairs of basic and historic structures do not occur on an automatic basis. The pier is not a new construction, it is fixing a pier that is no longer safe. I'm certain that such questions did not arise during the rebuilding of the Des Moines Pier. The Redondo Pier is a tiny fraction of the size. Please figure it out. We would like just a little bit of ice cream, too. Redondo is currently very neglected and rejected in appearance. The pier is barricaded with ugly cyclone fencing. I understand that old restrooms will get knocked down, then there will be full view of the rotting pier and the cyclone fencing. In the meantime, the old restrooms continue to look and smell horrible. Salties is empty, and the appearance looks neglected, as well as the property in front of it. So I'm gonna cut this down. So, we talk a lot about bringing revenue into the area. Salties has an eight-million-dollar price tag on it. Why would anyone invest eight million dollars at Salties when they look at the condition of the Redondo Beach community now? We need that investor, we need those funds, we need those people to come to, back down to Redondo. And that, that buyer will need to feel the partnership of the Des Moines City Council. Partnership in keeping Redondo Beach beautiful and their investment. We neared the pier fixed to complete the appearance and accessibility of our Redondo Beach waterfront. These are easy fixes, Redondo Beach is very small. Please care about making these fixes and elevating the experience for residents, investors, and visitors of Redondo Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie. Victoria, you're up next. And then Mark, you're next after her.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff, and Neighbors. For the record, I'm Victoria Andrews, resident of Des Moines. Once again, I need to ask the Council to think about needs versus wants. It is clear from the impressive turnout of Redondo residents in their petition that this project should take priority over the Marina Steps. Is the Council clinging to the steps' vision because it sunk so much money and energy into it already that it's now dug in? Do you crave this legacy rather than the legacy of being prudent fiscal stewards of our meagre financial stability? The initial reason for developing the steps was to connect the downtown business district with the marina. Yet the Council has chosen to put the steps before the connection to them. When the CIC was invited to interview the City Manager candidates, I was impressed by the outsider, that Texan. She said two words I wanted to hear: communication and planning. The Council fired Michael Mathias, and the community was behind you in that decision. You hired Ms. Caffrey, and we are behind you with that as well. We have already seen that she knows how to communicate. Now let her do the job you hired her to do, to help lead you, to help you plan. I'm thrilled that reinstituting the Planning Commission is also on tonight's agenda. I strongly recommend a combo of the third and fourth action. The third presented on January ninth to reevaluate the long-term development strategies, including the steps to Twenty-Third Street, the estuary restoration project, including how it will impact beach park utilization, and commit to utilize funds already allocated for the Redondo Pier. I also ask you to consider holding a town hall where officials, staff, and residents can have two-way communication about what we want our future to look like. Let Ms. Caffrey and her new administration heads hear us. Put a pause on the steps while we examine where our limited budgets, both restricted and general funds, would have the greatest impact. Let the City Manager lead you, that's what she's there for. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And Mark, you're next. And Deana, you're next after him. Oh, go ahead.
Deputy Mayor, Council. Excuse me. First thing I'll say is, I'm awfully glad I don't have your job. Second thing is, I want to correct an error I made at the last meeting. I said that the Redondo boardwalk took about eighteen months to get replaced. I did a little research, it actually took twenty-three months. So, a little bit longer. Third, I'd like to have you look into, or at least consider, the idea of seeing if the county has any money. King County put a lot of money into the boardwalk, and it got done very quickly. And I know there's limited funds around, and the idea of any federal money coming in, in the current situation is pretty slim. So there may be some county money that's available, because they sure stepped up real quick when they did the boardwalk when it went down. I'm not sure how that was done. I'm sure that folks could talk to P. Von Reichbauer and find out pretty quick whether there's anything available there. I'm gonna echo some of the comments that I heard earlier from people at Redondo. I started going to the marina itself when I was in high school. Did a lot of fishing down in the South Sound. Then I moved to the Redondo area about eighteen years ago. And I retired three, four years ago. So I spent a lot of time on the boardwalk, and I've spent a lot of time on the pier. My kids fished there, spent summers there when they were growing up. And it's, it's a structure that's there, kind of. It needs to be replaced. The stairs aren't there. It's an idea. And it's maybe a good idea. But I've been going from the marina since I was in high school into downtown Des Moines for how long ago that was, fifty-five years ago. So it's not like it's something that's needed right now. That pier is needed right now. You, I have a direct view of it, so I see people down there climbing over the fence, down there at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning. When I used to see fisher folk down there, all hours of the day and night. You could, during season, you would see people shoulder to shoulder across that pier, squitting and fishing until three, four o'clock in the morning, and they had to, they'd run to their cars, change their clothes to go to work. So, and I walked down on the boardwalk probably four days a week. I see Councilmember Osseger down there quite a bit. And, you know, the number of people who use the boardwalk is gigantic, and the number of people who used to use the pier probably doubled that. And now they've got no place to go. You could bring more business in, bring maybe the old store back. And I agree with one of the comments that was made about who's gonna invest in an eight-million-dollar restaurant to replace Salties when you've got a pier that's falling down. And that, it did not happen overnight. I remember when it was closed down, I went down and looked at a low tide. I could stick my arm all the way into my shoulder in those pilings. So it's something that needs to be fixed. Let's get it done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Deana Rome, next up. Deana Rome. Hi, Deana. And then the last person after Deana is Corlin Beck, so be prepared for that.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. Nice to see you. Appreciate being here and having the opportunity to speak. It's interesting to sit and step back and just listen, try to put all the emotion aside. And some very fantastic points have made, been made here tonight. Namely, finish what you started. And there's a pier that's broken, definitely. And one could ask why we haven't had a restaurant and Salties is up for sale, and that might be because, well, there's a pier that's broken. And people don't come to look at chain-link fences when they're spending, you know, five years ago, fifty dollars for a buffet. I'm gonna read what I started writing and actually sent in by email. It was so important to both my husband and I. We were in Mexico, a lot warmer than it is right now. But it was the day that you had your last City Council meeting, January twenty-third. And we felt it important enough that we wanted to share our opinion. So, our family history at Redondo dates back to nineteen forty-five. My mother-in-law Margaret and her sister Geraldine, we have a picture of them right here that we hold dear in front of the Redondo skating rink. Didn't know there was a Redondo skating rink, but apparently it drew enough attention that everybody came down the hill to the Redondo skating rink. We cherish that photo. We don't have them with us anymore, but it's so much a part of that. Redondo Rick, first person to reach out to us when we moved here, and shared with us about the skating rink. When I was a teenager, at sixteen, I lived in Kent. I went to Kent Meridian High School, so I was on the East Hill of Kent. But my girlfriend and I would talk our mothers into driving all the way to Redondo to go hang out at the beach. And we liked Redondo because there was a beach there to lay out, although it was rocks, and our moms could be on one side and we could be at the other. Lots of great memories, many of which my mother will never hear about. As an adult, it time, it came time to sell our home, my husband and I. We lived on the West Hill of Kent, so not too far from here, four-point-two miles. We looked for a year and a half, and we knew we wanted to be in Redondo. It was the place that we just knew was everything we wanted to be. You could see Tacoma, you could see the islands, you could see into Seattle, and you can see the Des Moines Marina. I didn't plan to write this, but as I'm listening to people, there's really two cities I hear about in Des Moines. You have the downtown and you have Redondo. But both are equally important. And having had a pier there that is no longer there, we need the families to continue to have their boardwalk and to watch all the mammals that go by and learn about our, our lives there. Thank you.
Thank you, Deana. Corlin Beck.
Good evening. My name is Corlin Beck, and I'm a resident of Federal Way. I actually live in the hills above Redondo, and the fact that I am here should be a testament to the power of that community. It draws people not just from Des Moines, but from the surrounding region to this beautiful waterfront area. And not having a pier has been so disappointing. I moved to this area about four years ago with my husband. We were excited to buy a house, live the American dream, get property near a waterfront that we could go and enjoy. And then we uncovered there's no pier, and Salties is closed, and the aquarium is struggling for funding. I strongly encourage you to consider putting forth your funding towards the Redondo Pier project. I prefer option three, actually. It gives you a little bit of an extra benefit, so that in case there is budgetary constraint, or you don't get the permanent time, or you miss the fish window, you have that leftover. And if you do still care about the steps project, you can use it, as it was suggested earlier, to continue with the plans. Make sure you have proper requirements in place for not just the steps, but the full connection into the downtown community, and do that at a later date when it has better funding and better thought put into it. The pier at Redondo is important to the people that live there. If you rebuild it, it would be a gathering place for the community in an area where third places are missing. There is nowhere for us to get to know each other, to talk about issues that matter, to exist without the expectation of having to spend money every single time. Not only that, but it'd be a benefit to the economy. I can't tell you how many times I have driven the multi-hour trek to get to the Edmonds Pier to go fishing, spent my money in their cafes, at their gas stations, bought food and drink at their bait shops, bait for my fish. What if we had that here instead? Revitalizing the pier would revitalize the Redondo community, its economy, and the people that live there. Not only that, I think it would actually have a bit of a benefit on the environment. Piers provide a specialized habitat that you don't find elsewhere in the world. The pilings host invertebrates and sea life that become food for others. And the waters in the sound, in Redondo in particular, act as a nursery for very rare species, such as the six-gill shark, the red octopus, the giant Pacific octopus, the seals, the porpoises, and of course, our region salmon. Not only would you be able to provide additional habitat for the creatures that live there, but you would draw more folks from the community to the region that has the aquarium that participates in conservation and community outreach. I think that is an important thing to consider that has not been brought up tonight. Not only is this pier important to our economy, our community, and our environment, it offers educational opportunities. Remember when you were a little kid and you peered over the railing into the water and said, oh, hey, what's that? And then learned about your environment? That's something that's missing at Redondo. If you rebuild this pier, you'll make a bunch of people happy, you'll revitalize the area. And like I said, the fact that I'm not even from Des Moines, you'd bring more and more people into this community. I strongly encourage you to consider this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Corlin. Appreciate it. So I am going to make the same offer I did earlier, because I took the sheet away in order to organize these into categories. So if you came in a little bit late or right up on the top of the hour, and you expected to sign in and you didn't get an opportunity, I'm gonna offer you that right now. Okay, yes, sir. Come on up, state your name, you all have three minutes. Let us know where you're from.
My name's Jim Irish, and I'm right here from Xeneth.
Okay.
I would caution each and every one of you on value engineering. It seems there's, Des Moines has a history of going cheap, and then we're back here doing it all over again. And I'm tired of spending my tax money to have something that doesn't last. Saltwater is a very harsh environment, and putting steel there leads to rotten corrosion. It was evident on the boardwalk. Mr. Harris has a good point on the deck. I walk down and see people, everybody has a dog, they're walking. And I don't think a dog can walk on something that I don't know what it is, some perforated stuff, because I see him going down to the, to the marina docks, and the dogs are walking down the wood center because they don't like walking on the perforated plastic. So, my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'm taking some notes here. So now I'm gonna open for additional questions from the Council after these public comments. Any other clarity questions before we open for a motion or discussion? Councilmember Mahoney? Were you, oh, no? Okay, I do have a question just in regard to this last public comment, I want clarity. So the value engineering is for the steps or for the pier? For the pier?
No, the value engineering, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, was I asking your name? Yeah, so I'm clarifying this for you and for all of us. So the value engineering is for the pier or for the steps?
Are you asking me?
I am asking you.
The value engineering is for the steps. The pier is being redesigned, which are actually two different things.
Okay. And then, in regard to the slap, pardon?
No. I'll have Mike, but the value engineering is really looking at the different components, piece by piece, and seeing what could be changed that would be less expensive. The redesign is sort of a new piece of paper with how you're going to do the pier. Yeah. Well, it's a different design.
So, sir, from the, from the top level, Mike Sullivan, Public Works Director, for the record, from the top level, it's the same finishes as you've seen. What we're redesigning after we've, to make it more cost-effective due to the environmental permits, is we're taking the pilings and making them eighteen inches instead of twelve. And then instead of having concrete bends that the, that the tops, that the flooring, the planks sit on, we're putting- we're putting steel. And it's all galvanized and covered sea steel. So, and that's because we're not allowed to use creosote pilings anymore. They are steel. They're, no, yes, small steel filled with concrete in the middle going to hollow steel because you don't need the concrete if you go to a wider pile and it doesn't have to go as deep, which saves money also. Did I get you?
Okay, and then... So I'll call on you in a moment. I'm still in the middle of a couple of questions. All right, thanks. So the answer, and then the slats, is that something that is an option for us? Or did you say earlier that this is a requirement, no matter what we would like to do? Could you clarify that?
Yes, Mayor. So the transparency of the passing of the sun through the pier is a requirement of the environmental permits.
So they're not going to let us have any other option? That's not up to us?
One of the things the staff talked about, and we have it, it's not in this project at this point, was the ability to put, you know, if you wanted to have an event out there or something, the ability to put kind of like a walkway out there or something, like a carpet that rolls out or something like that. But right now, the answer is no, it's not in the plans.
Okay, not up to us. And then I do have another question, but I will allow you to ask yours first. Okay, all right. So then also a clarity about moving forward with the steps tonight. Are we deciding to move forward with the steps? Or are we simply asking for the expenditure of $100,000 to get answers with regard to components of design?
Mayor, we're just asking for $100,000 for additional design, to break those pieces out I've talked about and some others that are more smaller so that we can bring that information back to you. There's no going forward. We will be back in front of council explaining what those items are.
Could you show that slide?
And asking further direction before we bid or before we go back out for a contract.
So you're saying, no matter what we decide tonight, if we opt for the $100,000 value engineering, we still have these other touchpoints where council's going to have to make a decision if the steps will go forward?
There's at least three more, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Those are my clarity questions. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. So can you describe the finish of the deck?
I could have showed you a piece. It's like a...
And I know you could have. And so what I would ask with all, you know, expeditiousness, if that's even an English word, if we could produce some kind of rendering of the actual finish. I talked about this...
I can bring the piece of material we have. Maybe when I go down to, I think I'm going to Redondo's next community meeting on the 19th. I could bring it down there and show it to them.
Could I see it?
Absolutely.
What a guy. Thank you.
Okay, so we've had questions. Yes, oh, thank you so much. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I'm starting to get a little confused by all the different things. I just want to clarify. Is the design for the Redondo Pier done and we are now out to permit? Is that an accurate statement?
The Redondo Pier, you approved in the last council meeting the additional money to redesign the structural components to bring it back into cost. So it is under a redesign. And in that redesign is also the monies for the amendment of the permits. So that is currently ongoing right now.
Is the expectation that the design will be done in time for the permits? Because you can't get the permits with...
Right. The critical path is the permit, not the pilings. The construction will be done, the design for construction will be done before we hear about the permits.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to get clear.
Okay, so could you put the options back up? All right, so I am going to open the floor for a motion on one of these options. Councilmember Harris.
I would like to make a motion to amend the bond ordinance to allow the small boat launch to be added to the list of applicable purposes.
Do I have a second?
No, point of order. The council can talk about whatever it wants.
Point, just your point of order.
I got four options here, man.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Thank you. Option number four states amend the bond ordinance to include new projects. And what Councilmember Harris did just now is he made a motion to amend the bond ordinance to include, and then he filled in a project.
But the point of order is that that is not a decision point for the council. None of those four options are. Those are the questions to be considered going forward. The only question we have tonight is what do we do about the $100,000 to it? And I would like the city attorney's opinion on this.
Thank you. I'm going to hand that to Tim.
Yeah, so the suggested motion from staff is to approve, that's what's in the packet. That's the suggested motion from staff. We do need answers. There's a list of questions. There is a slide there. So that we kind of have a, the motion would get us to one place, but there are a number of policy questions that the staff has requested answers on. And that would include whether or not the council would like to amend the bond ordinance. I will say it cannot be amended tonight. We actually have to draft it, right? So if the council would like us to draft amendments to the bond ordinance, that would be the motion that you would make tonight.
Indeed, but the option says specifically to move expeditiously. And so I would ask, do I have a second on that?
Councilmember Nutting, are you hearing the motion?
Yes, I heard the motion.
Do you have a second? I just need to know if you have a second for that. If you don't, that's fine. Because I can't see you.
Well, I'm here. No, I don't have a second.
Thank you. So with no second, the motion dies. I do want to offer an option similar, councilmember, because this is where we are at the moment. I would have wanted to wait till later. What do you think about, where is this, where is the wording? What do you think about a motion that we direct staff to bring back to the council information for the consideration of a sling launch and stack storage?
It's lovely, but the, you know, the functional thing is you have to have, the small launch has to be unacceptable use. Unfortunately, it was promised to the boat owners in 2022 the moment that the small launch failed.
I know, but you can't make a presentation about this now.
It has to be part of the bond ordinance in order to obtain funding.
There's too much, there wasn't a second for a good reason, so...
I'm just saying, it's a lovely idea, but this is, there was a specific point here. Thank you.
Okay. Good, then. So that is answered. So I'm open for, I'm open for a motion on any number of these things, including the motion that was in the packet. Councilmember Mahoney.
Point of order? Yes, I believe Councilmember Oxger raises hands.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Thank you. I'm staring, I'm going to, I'm going to offer it to Councilmember Oxger. Thank you.
Thank you. I move that we fully fund the Redondo Pier only, fully funded with the bond proceeds and that we then determine what we're going to do with the excess money once we've exhausted the question about whether or not the, being able to meet the fish window is going to leave us with enough funds to do anything. But my motion is to fully fund the Redondo Pier at this point and wait until we have a better idea on what is going to happen.
Okay, so option number three is your motion. Do I have a second?
No. I have a point, I have a point of order objection, which is...
You didn't say point of order, so I would have called you if you would have said point of order. So go ahead with your point of order.
This is not on the agenda tonight to make a policy decision of what we were going. This is a discussion. It's a study session. The only thing that was noticed as a vote tonight is whether to go ahead with the $100,000 for the reengineering. That's the only thing. We can't vote on anything else.
Well, I did ask that specific question and gave scenarios to the city attorney, so I'm going to let you two have that discussion. Because I asked this question specifically with examples. And so these are motion, okay?
Well, I'll just point to the agenda packet, which is titled Marina Steps, Redondo Pier, and Bond Project. So that's what the presentation has been about. And then if you refer to the alternatives, there is the suggested motion, which relates to the value engineering piece. But in the packet, we do discuss alternatives, which are also listed up here. And we reference prioritizing and funding one of the two projects as a priority and seek additional funding for the remaining project or pause progress on the other projects. We also discuss amending the bond ordinance. So I believe that all of this information, which was the basis for the presentation tonight, is what's being discussed.
So we had one recommended motion, but that, because it's recommended, that doesn't mean that we have to take it. So I think what's happening as a result of this discussion, other councilmembers are offering motions on the table that are allowed because the subjects were in the packet. Is that true?
Point of order again. I disagree. I don't think, because a subject matter is in the packet, particularly the study session, that that necessarily puts a vote on the table in front of the council. That is not consistent with our protocol rules. That is not consistent with Robert's Rules of Order. If it is a study session, then we're here to discuss, but we're not necessarily taking a vote that is binding in any way. I think we can certainly make a reference to staff to go look at an option.
Okay, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor. I am going to go with the city attorney on this one. So I am going to take the motion and the second and have discussion. There are other options on the table. If this does not pass, we've got other options moving forward. So I am going to take the city attorney's advice, take that motion, and take that second. Do we have discussion? Councilmember Oxger. And I do want to move forward, recognizing here. What, I want to give you some perspective, recognizing who's at the table and who's on the phone and all of these people in here. What do we think is going to happen tonight? Please keep your comments as concise as possible. Please try not to repeat yourself. Go.
Thank you, Mayor. If you check out the Washington Department of Fisheries, you will see that there is a fishing pier at Seacrest, which is next to the Seattle Water Taxi. Then you have to come all the way down to Redondo and we have the main fishing pier here, or not Redondo, excuse me, Des Moines. The main fishing pier. You have to go all the way down to the Les Davis Pier on the Ruston waterfront. There used to be a pier at, the pier is still there, but it's at Dash Point, but it's no, nothing in sight as far as repairing it. If we're supposed to be the premier waterfront access for the area, there's only one pier right now. We're talking about putting the Redondo Pier back into service. That makes us extra valuable. And if we want to raise money to raise revenue, which we desperately need, it's going to put the sale of the Salties parcel in a much better light. And it's going to enable us to attract more business to the area. And this is not, this is not, you know, strictly for the people of our area. As the woman said from Better Way, we've got a million people behind us, to the Cascades behind us. They have no access to the water except for what we've got. So let's get Redondo back online. If the situation with the permits allows, yes, if the situation with the permits allows us to move on to some of these other projects, then do it. But get Redondo done now. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
I will be supporting this motion because I will be making a motion if this should fail on option one, including the value engineering funding that's prescribed in here because I believe in getting the Redondo Pier done for all the benefits Councilmember Oxger just said. But I also believe we need to look at the components of the steps to see if we can put something together that's a board that brings a great value and a placemaking to the community of Des Moines. And in this case, I'm voting for a win for both. So for that reason, I can't support his motion because it doesn't include something we should also be doing.
Okay, any other comments for the first time? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
You know, one of the most frustrating things about being on the council is when things get pitted against one another and we get our backs up. We were keen here tonight to discuss our options and yet, you know, all of a sudden, things have fallen into two camps. And that's really, really, really a shame. I think the Redondo Pier needed to be built a long time ago. I don't understand fully why it hasn't moved forward yet. But we need to move it forward and I am fully supportive of that. I took my boys down there when they were young. It's a community pier. It's not about the million people behind that. And frankly, I can't imagine Redondo would want those million people coming down to their pier. Where the heck would they park? You know, and on top of that, Redondo's not a business district. This is not going to somehow create this wonderful, vibrant, business-oriented area in Redondo. Yeah, it might help sell Salties, but, you know, you've already got Woden Park as a great community meeting area there. You've got a lot of things going on. I want to build the pier, don't get me wrong. But it's not, it shouldn't ever be an either/or. And certainly this, only for the reason that I want to vote for proposition one. I want us to move forward with the pier. I want us to see if we can make that window, the fish window, and get this darned thing done. And I also want to see that we get to the point where we at least have the finished plans on the steps because I think that, given the advice that we've had, is what benefits the community the most. So we have two things that are going to benefit us and I think that's the better option. So I'm going to vote against this one.
I think I saw Councilmember Grace Matheny's hand and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that while there are a ton of information, we've had a massive amount of review here and some of you may have seen this information for the first time as well. This motion allows us to talk about more than one option. The suggested motion narrows that focus already. So it gives us as a council to express our ideas, concerns, opinions about at least more than one of the options listed, which I believe we should do in order for folks here and listening online or listening later to hear a varied amount of opinions talking about the pros and cons of four or maybe more approaches rather than one. That's what this motion would have done. So while I expect this motion to fail, I want us to have the opportunity to talk about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
So actually, there are three camps here. The public is not aware, but my colleagues are, that I made a proposal to rebuild the boat launch and a dry stack storage facility. Dry stack would generate... Dry stack would generate over a half a million dollars a year in revenue, bottom line, okay?
So you, this isn't-
So, hang on. Hey, because it's going to end, please, a little bit, a little bit of leeway. I am not going to support this. It will appear petulant to people, but basically, the marina, the core business, is the sun. Everything else, including Redondo, the beach park, everything that you like, Anthony's, the quarter deck, and so on, are the planetary bodies. The dry stack facility, which every other marina in the area has, okay, is the only true revenue enhancement device.
You need to speak to the motion, councilmember.
And, and Redondo is a park. The Marina Steps are a park. The voters tasked us to do more with the revenue we have. If we were any other marina in the entire area, we would have had dry stack 25 years ago.
Please speak to the motion. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Oxiger, for your second time.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Nutting, do you have a comment before we go to second round?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I will be supporting this motion. I am in support of the Marina Steps and setting the table for more businesses to come to the community. And, yeah, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, Councilmember Oxiger, for your second time.
Okay, yes, thank you. We need to look at the timeline. There's, we're saying that, oh, we could do these two things separately and all of this, but if you look at the timeline, the completion of the Redondo Fishing Pier is winter 2026. The completion for the Marina Steps is spring 2026. We're not talking about putting the Redondo Pier first, we're putting it second.
Can you address that, please?
So the timeline at the top assumes, we have permits, which I can't miss an opportunity to say, and in this case, winter is like early 2026. Isn't that correct, Mike? So it'd be like a year from now. So it would actually be first.
First.
I apologize if the timeline dots make it look different. I, but winter is early 2026.
Okay, it, it still leaves us with, without the option of Councilmember Harris's, you know, request and all of that. That's the money that's left over if we are able to complete Redondo. My point is, we need to complete Redondo first. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Harris, for your second time.
I would have fully supported the Redondo thing if there had been support for the boat launch, which was $0. The, unfortunately, because, I'm sorry, but you guys are not marina-oriented people, there is also a permit window for the boat launch, which we have to hit. If we don't put it in the ordinance and make it a possibility, we will not hit that window.
You're still pitching a different motion.
So I'm just, I'm just telling you, that's, that's, you know, that's the thing with, with Redondo, there are time windows for all of these things. And I'm just telling.
Thank you. I'm going to take it to a vote. All in favor of this motion, raise your hand. Councilmember Oxiger and Councilmember Grace Matsuwi. Councilmember Nutting, are you raising your hand?
I am not.
Okay. And all opposed, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Harris, myself, and Councilmember Nutting, how do you vote?
I'm raising my right hand as a N.
Motion fails five to two. Okay, we, Councilmember Mahoney.
Let me go back to the options, please. Just so I read this right.
Okay.
All right. I move to fully fund with bond proceeds the new pier project. I also to approve task assignment with KPFF in the amount of $100,000 for additional value engineering and scope reduction for the Des Moines Marina Steps project, and authorize the city manager to sign the task assignment substantially in the form as attached.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second discussion. Councilmember Harris.
You know, I came here prepared to vote for whichever side would be willing to consider dry stack, because half a million dollars a year is more money than any darn business you could ever-
Please address the motion, Councilmember, you have pitched it.
However, however, this thing, you're asking me to support a train that is heading in the wrong direction. You just want it to go faster, you know? And this is about, we're supposed to be about compromise, and there is no compromise, and I'm just expressing my frustration. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
You're going to hate me, mayor, but I'm going to go into the dry stack storage. And I just, it's, it's that and the lift.
If you could wait for possibly another segment to talk about that, because I am, I'm fully prepared to address that in a, after this motion is done. So I will make space for that.
I was just going to say, there's, there's time for it in a greater place. Anyway, I, I, this is, this right here, it funds and we get the pier done. Obviously, we want it in the first fish window, not the second window. We get to see what the components and parts are of the steps. So we get to make a decision down the line, but we need to know that information. That's what's important. And I heard somebody, you know, the 223rd project should be in combination with it. Well, if we wait, it just gets more expensive. If we can do this piece and complement it with the other in the future, it's going to be at the lowest cost to the city. It has been our vision, and it'll be the biggest impact. But waiting only makes it more expensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I think that this is the most valid option to move forward from this point. The community of Redondo needs to get their pier done. This is the process through which it will get done the fastest. And secondly, is that two scoops is okay with me. I don't need the sprinkles. I don't need the whipped cream. I want to see what it looks like with just two scoops and see if we can get that bitted out. You know, so this is what allows us to move forward on the steps, a small step at a time, so to speak, on the pier, the full length of the pier, and let's get that in the water. Thank you. I think this is the right way to go.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Grace Matsuwi.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. I want to recognize the many, I haven't had a chance to count, pieces of email that we received over the past week and a half, asking us to reconsider funding the Marina Steps. While it is something that I think is extremely admirable, and it goes to placemaking, there are others' projects that arguably we could do in a similar fashion, that would not exhaust seven, or eight, or 11 million dollars in a ramp and a set of steps. I do believe that actually option three would get the Redondo, Redondo Pier finished the fastest, because we wouldn't be working between two massive projects rather than just one. But it sounds like that the folks who are arguably, well, the idea is to move forward whether or not we hear our residents. And so even though I think that the public comment tonight, the emails that we have gotten, I struggle to get more than two positive responses on the Marina Steps. I hope that we have come forward in a way that this body listens to citizens. We were told pretty clearly that we needed to make some tough choices last fall economically. I don't see that change happening with this vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger, and then Councilmember Harris.
I guess the proper way to do this is to put this in the form of, of an amendment. And the amendment would be, my problem with the, the amendment would be, is to bring forward information on amending the bond ordinance to include new projects. In addition to the other, bring, bring the information forward, because quite frankly, Council, well, do you need a second on this?
What I would recommend is, this option number one does not preclude that one. So I'm just going to say, if you don't make that, I will, but after this one. So I'm, I'm going to, if, just ahead of time, if you want to make that motion after this is done, I will second it, put it that way.
I will withdraw my amendment.
All right. So any, Councilmember Harris.
I will not support this, and I will give you two numbers. The unfunded amount of marina core business repairs due by 2040, which is 15 years, is currently $81,270,000. The entirety of the marina financing in 2007 master plan was about under 25. That's called the time cost of money, folks. You just heard that construction inflation is much higher than the CPI. Do you know how much $81 million is going to be in 2040? I'm just, I'm done.
Any other comments? And just a second, looking down the line. Councilmember Nutting, do you have any comments in regard to this motion on the table?
No, I'll be sort of supporting the motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I would like to address just a couple things that got said, and I have heard, nobody wants the steps. Why isn't there anybody here supporting the steps? My take is, they're either trying to run their small business downtown and are exhausted from 80 hours working this week, or they, they're at PTA, a sporting game, or taking care of their kids tonight. So I just want to say, I did, I did set out an entire day to try and discover if people were in favor of the steps, because I thought they were. And I did get down one side of Marine View Drive before I twisted my ankle, couldn't walk anymore. And, and unanimously, everybody I ran into inside of these businesses and the business owners saved one. So every citizen, whether they were a resident of Des Moines or a visitor, like in a beauty salon, getting their nails done, getting their haircut, whatever, and every single business that I visited on Marine View Drive were all in favor of the steps. And in a, in a gathering of Des Moines businesses last night, it was everybody but two, and one of those was the same dissenter. So I'm just saying, whether there's a, that was not scientifically, statistically valid at all, but it just, it tells me I do, and if I stood outside of the elementary schools in the city of Des Moines during coming and going of parents, and just showed them the picture and said, do you want this, I would get the same kind of response that the citizens did down in Redondo, and I could, I wouldn't have to tell them I was the mayor, right? I just want to say, I don't know what the majority is, I just know people are interested in steps. So I agree with Councilmember Oxiger, this gets us fully funding the, fully funding, moving forward the pier, and this $100,000 does not commit us to the other steps of the marina. And because we already see staff needs to identify more funds for us to move forward. So if we, if we get to step two, that was on that other slide, and we don't have the funding, we don't move forward. So I'm in favor of option one. So now I am going to take it to a vote, all in favor of this motion on the table, please raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Mahoney, myself, and Councilmember Nutting, how do you vote?
Yea.
Councilmember Nutting is in favor, all opposed to the motion on the table, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsuwi, and Councilmember Harris. The motion passes three, four, two, three. So, good, you have the pier, excellent, on, turbocharged. Oh, right. So the next motion, I said I would like to offer it this way, Councilmember Oxiger, if you would agree with this, feel free to. I move that we direct staff to bring back to the council information for the consideration of a sling launch and stack storage. Does that sound good to you?
I'll second it.
Second that motion. All right, discussion. Councilmember Mahoney.
I'm not opposed to this. I have always favored the dry stack storage and the sling, or whatever we decide to do, reverse gravity system, or something along those lines. I just believe the building could be more than just a dry stack storage. I think there's some great opportunity to add possibly SR3 or mask component that might bring visitors here. I see the potential for a restaurant, or the moving the harbor master's office into that building, and then vacating that property for the potential of a restaurant or something. So there's lots of different opportunities that I think are far greater. And I see it being in conjunction with the rest of the marina development. Councilmember Harris talked about the large amount of money that's required to develop and finish the marina. The truth is, is every, if you go there and you look at the marina, about where the harbor master's office is, it goes to wood piling, a wood structure all the way south. And that has to be replaced in addition to the docks. And it's stepped out to be in two different phases later. And part of that is, the marina itself and what it can, has, is capable of funding in its own bond capacity. That is when, I believe, the dry stack storage in the second phase is best to be done, but it's best to be done smartly, where we can take advantage of that building and have multi-uses, including a farmer's market, et cetera.
So can I, can I interrupt for a moment?
So-
Because you were pitching, pitching it something, can you-
No, my, my point is, is I'm fine with supporting this, this information, but I see it being a bigger thing down the road.
And are you amenable to those additional questions when you bring the subject forward?
I, I think if there is interest from the majority in exploring the dry stack and the boat sling, what I'd like to do is actually put a future agenda item, maybe next week, maybe the 27th, to actually have a guided discussion on what you want me to look the feasibility into, right? Like, what are the assumptions I should be making? What are the, you know, goals? Like, I don't want to just do some feasibility analysis in a vacuum and then have missed the mark. So I'd rather have the discussion and make sure I'm hitting on the things that are most important to you all. And I could bring that back, next week, we could bring it back the 27th.
Does that sound good? Okay, I would like to take that to a vote. Councilmember, Councilmember Nutting, do you have any questions or discussion?
I, I do have one question, I think direct things on it, but I, I thought that when we put in for our permit for the LMN docks, that we did include the permitting for the sling launch as well. And so I guess my question is, is if we choose not to do that when we replace LMN, if, if that, if that permit just goes away for the sling launch, or if we have the ability to do that at, at a later date and still carry that permit?
Councilmember Har-
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Councilmember Harris also asked me about that. The, the permit is very clear that we can remove the existing equipment that is there. We are still seeking clarity on whether or not the permit includes the inclusion of new equipment, but that is a immediate issue we want to get clear on. So Councilmember Harris already alerted me to this, we're looking on it, and I hope to have a, a answer for you very soon.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Okay. So, all in favor with, of the motion on the table to direct staff to come back to us, and which would include discussion, information, what we want next week? All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsuwi, Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Nutting, how do you vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Nutting and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris passes six, one for that. Okay. What I would like to do, we have a couple of other things, we are not going to be able to complete everything on our agenda tonight. So, but what I'm going to do is give you a few moments, if this is what you were here for and you'd like to leave, I'm going to let everybody rustle their coats together and, I'll just wait for you to. Congratulations, thank you, on the pier. The next is the planning commission and the airport- The next is the planning commission, and the airport committee is what we have next. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please visit out in the lobby area, we do need to continue to conduct our meeting tonight, so if you could quickly exit and close the doors, that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Okay, next up is a discussion on the formation of a planning commission. The purpose of this item is to discuss the formation of a planning commission and offer direction to staff about moving forward. We'll have a presentation by the city manager, Catherine Caffrey.
It's actually by Rebecca Denning.
Oh, Rebecca, excuse me, hey, that's why you're standing up there. Okay, go ahead, Rebecca.
Hello, how's everyone doing tonight? I got a little presentation of, most of the information is in the agenda. The definition through the RCW is that it's an advisory body appointed by the governing body here, the council, that is responsible for directing the long-range growth and development of a jurisdiction through maintenance and implementation of the city or county's general plans, rules, and regulations. I went through and looked at the history of our planning agency, which was dissolved by the council in 2013. It consisted of seven members, staggering of four-year terms. The members were appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, and they met on an average of four or five times annually, although I think they had regular monthly meetings that were generally canceled. But when I looked at the agendas, it was generally four or five times. Generally, the powers and functions of a planning commission is to provide citizen review and recommendation on planning-related matters. They do not typically exercise any kind of legal power to approve or deny any kind of development or applications. The council always has the final say on land use, planning, and development, and establishes the overall vision for the community that informs policy. The commission acts in an advisory role and provides recommendations to the council. They bridge the gap between the public and government, and seats are filled by local members of the community. The commissioners usually have some sort of land use planning, design development, or economic development background, but not always. Some communities have very specific requirements for members to have certain types of backgrounds. Sometimes they have certain number of seats that have that kind of background, and some are just general members. Some don't have any kind of requirements. Commission meetings can be definitely a forum that creates a consistent community engagement, conduct, they are required to be part of the Open Public Meeting Act, and subject, as I mentioned, subject to the Open Public Meeting Act. I reviewed council minutes to try and see how many of the items that came through council in the last two years that would have gone through a planning commission. I found four items. So, in two years, you would have had four items that would have gone to a planning commission. That would have been your housing action plan, there was the land use and text code amendment for the business park moratorium area, the Des Moines Creek Business Park Master Plan, and the zoning map amendment. So, these would have gone through the planning commission for a recommendation to the council. You still would have had the final say, or I believe one of them ended up being remanded to the hearing examiner, but it still would have gone through them for recommendation. Based on our current work program, we have a few items with the comp plan, obviously, those all would have gone through for recommendation to the planning commission, but based on our work program, items that we have coming up, these are the items that would have gone, would go through a planning commission, such as our middle housing ordinance, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, our comprehensive plan, and any code cleanup that we would do as part of the comprehensive plan, or any other municipal code cleanup that's related to development, would go through the comp, would go through the planning commission. There's different pros and cons. Most people recommend a planning commission, a lot of cities have planning commissions. The commission functions as an added layer for the public to come and have discussions about, again, codes, policies that are going to be recommended to the council. They engage in the review process at this level before council decision. The planning commission can also have different objective reviews with less political influence, they're not subject to those people who are gonna be voting for them, and they don't have any legal power. They take projects and code updates from the planning commission, it can add, add review time, so if there's, some development agreements usually go through planning commission, so developers are sometimes, don't want to see a planning commission, because that adds an additional date to go to them, so it expands the time that that project would have to go through, so that's a con that some people would say, but the public likes to see that. Council's first exposure to a project will always be at the end of the process. It's gonna go through a huge thing through the public and everything, and then it's gonna get back to you, and it's gonna go, come at the very end of this process, so if, if you guys don't like it, then we end up starting all the way back over again, where in, instead of it being with you, sending it back to staff and going back to you. Additional administrative time, added resources, and staff, which is all that I pulled up from a lot of your, the video that I watched from 2013, and when you disbanded it, is what I was finding, the reason it was disbanded, is part of the reason. So, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, looking down the line, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, then Councilmember Harris.
I'm curious about your statement that the public really wouldn't get informed until the end process?
The council.
The council?
You, you wouldn't see the project on your agenda until the end of it, because it would go through the planning commission first, so you wouldn't get, get it until the end of the product, the end product, wouldn't come to you till the end, because the planning commission would see it, and would work through the planning commission.
When does the public get informed about something coming in?
At the planning commission, that's where the public hearing would take place.
And so that would be a publicly noticed hearing?
Correct. So, instead of the public hearing being in front of the council, the public hearing would take place with the planning commission. So, that's one of the things that, is, would be a big difference, would, right now, you guys have the public hearing, you guys hear from the people directly when there's an item, and the item is advertised for the city council meeting. If there was a planning commission, the item would be advertised for the planning commission, so the planning commission would hear from the people about the item, and then it would come to you for approval, but the public hearing would have been advertised for the planning commission.
And so there wouldn't be a public hearing in front of the city council?
Not usually. Usually there's just one public hearing, and that's usually at the planning commission.
And it would just be public-
It would just be a regular agenda item. Some, some councils end up putting it on consent, if it's already been recommended through the planning commission, some have it on the regular agenda and still take testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Based on your experience, and, you know, I don't want to hold you to it, but, no, just, because you had one at your, your last job.
Yes.
How many hours do you think you devoted to it? Or staff in general, to, you know, organize? And if that's an awkward question, I'm not trying to, but, but I, I really want to, if possible-
A lot. It was a very different city, we were growing, we had a lot of projects with development agreements, so we were a very growing city. We met twice a month. So, looking at my agendas that we had here versus there, is very different. I spent a lot of overtime on staff at my last planning commission, I can tell you that.
Hey, no-
I wasn't, but my staff was.
So, and, so is there a way to quantify it based on, because Denise, I mean, I remember her specifically saying, "We don't need it, because we don't have any projects." She just sort of, you know, occasionally-
My original, when we talk, when I was talking with, with Catherine, city manager, about this, at first I was like, you know, I don't know how I, you know, everyone has a planning commission, it's, as a professional planner, I don't know how I come to tell you not to recommend a planning commission, but honestly, when I went through the agenda, I saw four items. I thought, wow, how can you guys put a planning commission together for four items? But, as a professional planner, I'm also supposed to say, yes, a planning commission is a good idea, but then I also saw only four items on the agenda that would have gone to them in two years.
Right, but we dissolved it, and then all of a sudden, we got a bunch of stuff.
Yes.
So, my other thing is, and I don't know how this would work, but, I mean, I, I support the idea, but I think what the public expects, in some fashion, is a way to integrate it with what we now call municipal facilities. Not formally, but essentially, I think people want to have a, have some kind of idea about development writ large, since all these projects, I mean, you cannot separate 223rd, for example, which is a transportation thing, from the steps, you know, which is economic development, and, so I'm just saying, can you, if not tonight, can the city consider some way to bring that together, at least in terms of providing information for this, for the residents?
See, and I think that's where there's some confusion, because there was a comment brought up today, that, for instance, the Zenith project and the SEPA that's going through right now would have gone to a planning commission. That's a demolition permit. A demolition permit would not go to the planning commission in any form, and a SEPA, I don't know of any, any city in Washington that a SEPA, that the planning commission's their SEPA official. So, that example is, is an example of where I, that still wouldn't go through-
Residents always get the detail, their-
No, I, what I'm trying to say is, what I'm trying to say is, we have a hearing examiner system in Washington, so projects don't generally go to the planning commission. It's, it's, usually it's a development agreement, and, and so, capital improvement projects and things like that are obviously through the public works department, and finding ways to get the public more involved through public meetings, and, and other ways, through transparency and website updates. I think there's definitely, we've talked about this through our work programs, and finding better ways to communicate and get people involved, but I don't think what we run into in those comments, that the planning commission is the answer for those issues.
Okay, I'm just trying to think if there's some vehicle to integrate it, rather than having like four websites or four departments developing web pages. And, and I'm just being, like, the federal government, what they do is, you don't have check printers in every agency, this is sort of a little detail, okay? Basically, everybody's computers go to one building that prints all the checks, and so I'm just trying to think of a way that we could have one-
You know, I, it's, I, one of the things that I've been thinking about is talking to our GIS department and figure out a better way to get maps. We realized just recently that some of our development project maps are so outdated, no one's been updating it. That's something that we could probably integrate both a development project map and a public works project map into one place, that there's maps with information.
Right on. Thank, thank you.
So, what I'd like to do is focus the discussion a little bit, these are, some of these questions would come forward, if we direct them to come back with a draft planning commission plan, then these would be things that we would ask them about. Yes, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I just wanted to, it looks like there's some neighboring jurisdictions and their planning commissions, but speaking from your experience, and I hope I can hold you to it, because it's your experience, how anomalous are we? Like, are we one of the very few, one of 20, in this area that ha, don't have a planning commission?
I tried to find that out. I reached out to MRSC, and I couldn't get a real answer. I tried researching on my own, just through searching websites. There are cities out there that don't, it generally is cities that are much smaller than us. We are very unusual for a city of our size, but where it's not unusual not to have one for cities that are much smaller than us.
And looking at your list of possible projects that could have gone to the planning commission, four would not cause a great deal of staff overtime meeting twice a week, correct? Or twice a month?
Correct. But the, the issue run into when there's only four over two years is keeping members on the planning commission, which I found a lot, a memo from two years prior to the disbandment of the planning agency, where we had four, five vacancies, and we were only able to find three people. So, it seemed to be that that was when we didn't have many meetings, finding and keeping people on it.
Thank you.
So, but yes. I agree, four meetings is not a huge staff lift.
Councilmember Oxiger?
I think I can offer a, a bit of information as to why you had the vacancy.
Well, let's, let's just stick with moving forward, it, she doesn't-
Well, the problem, the problem why it was, it was that way is because the members of the planning commission were upset with the fact that they were constantly being ignored by the city council.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilmember Nunning, I want to offer you an opportunity, if you have a question for Rebecca?
Yeah, I just, since, since you were in a, a city that had a planning commission, how, how effective did, was that planning commission in, in your opinion?
It depends on the council. I, you know, I've been, I've been doing this for, not just the last city, but I've been, you know, I, I came from a state that had commission, planning commissions too, prior to my last job, and councils change over, and that means that previous appointments stay in place when new councils get elected, which means that the commissions were from previous councils, and so I've had plenty of commissions that have made recommendations that the councils don't go with, and get very frustrated. And I don't know a single council member that I have talked to that has said that they blindly look at the recommendation of the planning commission. They always make their own decision, no matter what the planning commission's recommendation is. So, whether it's effective or not, it definitely gives an opportunity for the public to come and speak, it definitely gives an opportunity for staff to work with, if it's a good planning commission, with a good background of commissioners. At my last city, they, they had a really good array of diverse people with very educated backgrounds in, in the field, that made it so effective to help us develop codes. But you, I've also worked at cities that had no backgrounds, and it made, it was very frustrating for staff to write, to get the, the feedback that was helpful. So, it's a mixed bag.
I would add that I think it is a best practice for a council to have a joint meeting with a planning commission regularly, and I would, in my experience, highly recommend that. That's how you maintain alignment. It doesn't mean every meeting has to be joint, but I mean, a couple times a year, this body and that body should get together to make sure they know your vision.
Yes, having a liaison that comes to me, that one, that also comes to the commission meeting regularly to interact, and also the planning commission would come and report out to the council every year as well.
Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Nunning. Just, double checking, do you have a, a tag onto that question?
Are we making some comments, or are we gonna, is it just questions, or am I not a mayor?
This is almost, this is not necessarily going to be a motion, it's directing staff to bring back to us information, and like a draft plan for a planning commission.
Okay, well then, I, I will say, I will say my comments then, when that comes-
I see.
When that comes back to us.
All right, all right. Councilmember Grace, yeah, thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I just wanted to check to see if we were doing that in the form of a, like a head nod vote, because I do think that part of that good governance is having a mechanism put in place regularly to hear back from residents about what's going on in their city, that we could add a layer of due diligence, and it doesn't take the control of the decision-making away from the council. And the last thing I would add is, your description of one of those planning commissions being ineffective could also be used to describe councils. You have no educational background, a lot of times, in making these decisions.
I do want to say that the direction here is going to be adding an agenda item, so it will be three nods. So, if, it would be nice if we thought we had three nods, if we could just move forward with that. One more, one more comment? Yeah, question?
What time of day were your planning commission meetings held?
Almost all of my planning commissions that I've worked for have been after regular business hours.
An excellent answer. I will support this.
Okay, your comment, Councilmember Nutting?
My, my comment is, it concerns, as you know, I, I am in construction, and the layer of bureaucracy to go through to slow something down, and I understand it's only four projects, but Des Moines is a small city, and we've, we've had challenges in the past with development, and we still have challenges today, and something that is going to slow, something that is going to slow down progression in the city is, isn't something that I'm going to support. I'm always going to err on the side of the developer and the contractor, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we have three head nods, we're just going to, do we have three head nods? I want to look. There's one, there's one, there's one in mine. So we have four head nods to bring this back as an agenda item, and I will ask council to, if you have questions or you would like specific information that you would like them to include when they bring this back to us, please write to the City Manager. She had a lot of experience with, with this, and, and so has Rebecca, so when they come back, I think it will be a pretty complete recommendation if we submit our questions. All right, we have about 15 minutes left, and I, I am going to start on the next conversation, and we will just move until we get a good breaking point. So it might go five or 10 minutes after. That's about my, my edge goal there. I feel like we've had a long, a long meeting, but it's important to start this because we had special guests come and talk to us. I want to honor the time and investment of public comment. Rebecca, thank you. We got the head nod, okay. Oh, you're here for this too? Okay, so.
Rebecca has a very brief, brief one slide.
Oh, my gosh. Like this.
We talked about that.
I know, so, okay, so.
One slide about what staff are doing with the regional group.
Okay, so the purpose of this item is for council to discuss the formation of an airport committee, which was recommended, or put forward, seven zero vote, that this airport committee will advise the council on matters requiring decisions and/or actions with regard to airport issues. I'm going to turn it over for presentation to Rebecca.
I'm just going to remind you what staff is doing on our four cities group and what we've been doing related to airport already, just so that, so that builds into the discussion. We have a four-city partnership that was formed originally in 2018. We have a contract with a consultant that was signed at the same time in 2000, later in 2018, did the new ILA, and we provided in latest comment letter on the NEPA in, in December. We meet weekly with the four cities and the SEPA officials and directors to talk about both consultant coordination, talk about if we want to try and get ahead of this and the SEPA review time, as that is expected to come out at the end of this year. We talk about start and Part 150 updates and people that are meeting between the four cities. We, we're planning for the future and talking about what we're expecting out of the final NEPA documents and when it's going to come out. Again, review of the SEPA documents with the consultants, what, how, what our game plan's going to be, and again, consultant coordination, so.
And those cities are?
Des Moines, Sea-Tac, Burian, and Normandy Park.
Des Moines, Sea-Tac, Burian, Normandy, how come, who's missing? Taquilla, maybe I'm thinking?
Yeah, Taquilla.
Yeah.
Well, the ILA is just the four cities.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So that was the presentation, just so that we know that something's going on that, that our cities are working together. So I sent all of you in a request asking for, before we begin the discussion as an overall overarching statement or sentence, that you, and this may be the last thing we can talk about today if we don't come to a general agreement about this, but what, what is, in one sentence capsulates what you think that this airport committee should do, its foundational goal or mission? And I did get one written in from Councilmember Oxiger, to extract suitable relief from Sea-Tac International Airport Operations revenues to mitigate the significant public health risks to its surrounding communities. Okay, that was Councilmember Oxiger's offering. Anybody else have an offering that they, we kind of need to be sure that we're all coming, not from seven different viewpoints? Like, we, we want to form this, but we all have a different idea about what issue. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I mean, as an advisory body, I'm, I'm not quite sure how the airport committee gets to this, but I, I do think that, you know, we need a little clarity about what our overall strategy or approach to the airport is. It's my personal opinion. We need to engage on the many levels that the airport exists. We need to stay in the conversation. We need to, as was told us by the woman from Beacon Hill, you know, make sure that the stories are heard, the personal stories are heard by the airport committee, that the impacts that the airport has on our communities are heard. And then I also think, similar to what I heard from what Councilmember Oxiger put out, is that we need to make sure that we're getting mitigation. And, and so I think that, you know, we need to, I don't know if the airport committee advises on the strategy or on particular projects or not, but I think that the city itself kind of needs to have that little more clarity about what it is that we're, is our approach to the airport, and I think that that's, that's a good starting point, is that we need to be engaged, we need to be heard, and we need to be looking for mitigation because it's got a good impact.
So can you summarize that in a sentence real quickly?
Engage, engage and extract mitigation.
So.
Funds.
Airport committee should engage and extract mitigation.
Well, no. I'm not saying the airport committee needs to do it. That's what the city should be doing.
Okay, but I'm asking you, I'm asking you for a summary statement about what you think that this committee should do. We're trying to.
And I led with, I'm not exactly sure how an advisory body is going to function in that capacity, but I think that's the first question, and then maybe once we get to the idea of, we have a city strategy, we can task an advisory committee to advise us on how to implement that.
Okay, so you, so your statement is advise the council with regard to its mission and relationship with the airport?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Advise the, advise the council how to implement the council's vision or strategy of how we interact with the airport.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Somebody taking notes on this for me? Okay, good, then I'm not going to keep taking notes. Councilmember Mahoney.
I used to attend the ones back when they were originally formed, just, just to listen in, but I think agreed with some of the other things said, but just hear and reflect the impacts, the various impacts of the airport. It's kind of all encompassing. There could be information about SAMP, or could be reflecting stories about somebody's backyard. It's just to give that human element that I see always missing, and I, take us back to when we had the meeting here. One of the biggest things was it gave an opportunity for our residents to share their personal impact, and I think these folks can, they can identify, they can be educated, and they can reflect on those impacts. So the original sentence stands, but I just had to expand on it for you so you understood what I was talking about.
Okay, gotcha. Councilmember Nutting, do you have thoughts on this?
Yeah, I just, I just have to agree with my two colleagues, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and Councilmember Mahoney, on, on, that would be my vision as well.
Okay. All right. I don't really, this is a mini version, almost, of our, of our retreat. I, I feel like, this is going to be, we all wanted this, but it is going to be hard for us to form it. We need a, I think we need a foundation stone, but I don't think we're going to get a foundation stone in four minutes or even 15 minutes. So I do think it's an important conversation. It was a seven oh vote, so I think we need to put effort and thought into this. If we could, when do you think we could bring this back? Can you, by memory, can you think about, do you have a raised hand? Councilmember Matsui, Grace Matsui.
Thank you. Can I make the motion?
Absolutely.
I move that the city council approve the formation of the airport advisory committee as outlined in the agenda item.
I'll second that. Discussion.
Mayor, if I may, the only thing is, is there's components in it that I think we ought to discuss.
Yeah, there are blank spaces. There are blank spaces.
And where I agree with the motion being made, I think the discussion, again, it's, it's not going to happen in 15 minutes. If what the component should be, what the membership should be, I think those all things need to be discussed.
Okay, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I 100% agree, and I believe that we will not be able to come to that agreement in 15 minutes, but if we approve this, we can kick off that planning and move a little bit faster on moving into a final formation at a later date.
Or we could agree to put, put the discussion on, on another agenda, like just as it is here. Councilmember Mahoney.
So I have a friendly mo, uh.
Okay.
Amendment, sorry, it's, obviously, we're all needing sleep now. But yeah, with the, we have formed the committee under the agreement with the consideration to come at a later date for the component.
To refine it.
To refine it.
Okay, let's, let's re, say, say what, what you think there.
So, can I read your motion? Do you have it handy?
Sorry.
Okay. Because I didn't, I didn't memorize it when you said it.
No problem.
So I, I move that the city council approve the formation of an airport advisory committee, currently outlined in the agenda, but subject to further determination at a later date. How about that? Does that work?
Sounds good. Does that sound good to you? Your motion, that sounds.
Thank you.
No, it's not my motion. It's the body's motion.
Okay. That sounds good to me. In other words, we're on the track, we got the train on the track, we're going to form this thing, we have a skeleton that we can work with. Pardon?
10 seconds.
10 seconds. All in favor? Councilmember, we got, I'm sorry, council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself, Councilmember Nutting, how do you vote?
In favor.
In favor, all opposed. Councilmember Harris is opposed, six to one. Who wants to make the, Councilmember Ox, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Check.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Nutting, how do you vote? In favor, do you vote to?
I vote no.
Six, six to one, motion passes to adjourn. Thank you.